Thank you.
Oh, Roberto. I will now take a voice vote for those who not.
Please use your e-devices to record your presence at this time. City council members, please use your devices to record your presence.
If you need your username or password, please raise your hand. If you need your username or password, please raise your hand. I will now, uh, username, password. Voice vote, take a voice vote for those who have not used your e-device. Alderman Hall, present. Alderman Mitchell, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Harris, Harris is present. Alderman Beal, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Ramirez, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Gutierrez, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Coleman, present. Alderman Curtis, present. Alderman O'Shea, present. Alderwoman Scott, uh, Scott is present. Alderman Talafaro, present. Alderman Wagispak, present. Alderwoman Rodriguez Sanchez, present. Alderman Viegas, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Mitt, not present in chambers. Alderman Spassato, Spassato is present. Alderman Napolitano, Napolitano is present. Alderman Riley, Riley is not present in chambers. Alderman Knudsen, Knudsen is present. Alderman Gardner, not present in chambers. Alderwoman Haddon, Haddon is present. Alderwoman Silverstein, Silverstein is present. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very well, thank you, Madam Clerk. We have forty, forty-two present, eight are absent. So we do have a quorum. Alder Viegas has requested to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in Rule 49. Madam Clerk, can you confirm Alder Viegas' presence online?
Alderman Viegas. Alderman Viegas, not present.
Very well. Okay, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, please remain standing for our invocation, which will be delivered today by Reverend Otis Moss III from Trinity United Church of Christ.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. We, the citizens of the city of big shoulders and diverse dreams, may we be unafraid to calibrate our moral compass to justice and our ethical responsibility toward equity. May we invest in our youth, cover our seniors, protect the marginalized, never allow our moral responsibility to be disrupted by Confederate fanboys masquerading as men. May we speak this day with words that elevate and ideas that empower all citizens of this city. We, the city of big shoulders, let our vision be wide enough to include all. And may we speak with words that will encompass and lift, bless and hold. And may we be unafraid of holy mischief that transforms our city. In the mighty and wonderful name of Jesus, we offer this prayer. And the people of God, who believe in the power of this city, may say, amen.
Amen. You may be seated. This is the portion of the meeting for public comments. Um, could we just ask for the chamber to be a bit more respectful and quiet as we prepare for public comments? Mr. Clerk.
The council will now begin the public comment period, which is limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Speakers cannot yield or transfer their time to another speaker. Any written comments that have been submitted will be posted and made available for aldermatic review. The first speaker this morning is Lindsay Wax.
Just a second, please. It's a little bit too loud here, you all. Can we just bring it down just a little bit so that we can hear the public speakers? Please continue.
Our first speaker this morning is Lindsay Wax.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Um, I would like to comment on why I stand with Mayor Johnson's veto um, of the curfew ordinance. First, I would like to thank the mayor for the veto and his willingness to stand up against racist and reactionary attacks like this ordinance. We saw in 2020 during the George Floyd uprising, um, Lori Lightfoot implemented a curfew where people were not properly informed in time. And this repression resulted in police brutality and misconduct across the city. Curfews only put Chicago youth and the community at risk, resulting in more police crimes and unnecessary detainments. This specific ordinance would allow CPD to call a curfew at any time and arrest anyone under eighteen, found outside thirty minutes after the call is made. Our youth deserve less contact with the police, not more. The broader threat of this ordinance will also be used to repress any gatherings of people, including protests, which is a threat to our democratic rights. The ordinance was legally dubious as well, so probably would have been sued, costing taxpayers money. To support Chicago's youth, we should invest in things that are proven to keep them off the streets and out of the prison cycle, like youth jobs and youth programming, public mental health centers, and non-police crises response. This ordinance is a direct product of the racist climate created by the Trump administration. These types of tactics are local manifestations of his agenda that we have to name and fight against. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Nate Holers.
Nate Holers is not here.
Our next speaker is Danny Smith.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Danae. I'm a tenant at Seventy-Six and Coles. I live in a building managed by Halstead Taylor and owned by Lauren Lambert and her group of investors, part of a portfolio of about thirty buildings, formerly managed by CKO Real Estate. I'm a member of the South Shore Tenant Union and South Side Together, and I'm here to talk about the issues in my building. My alderman is Greg Mitchell. In my building, there's no communication between the tenants and the landlords. The landlords, they communicate with us. So when we talk about repairs, it takes them twenty-four to forty-eight hours to get back in contact with us. And then they constantly text us about rent and rent and harass us, but they do not fix the problems that's going on in our building. We have been dealing with problems way before Halstead came about. Like, we don't have no hot water, no heat, and there's a rodent infestation. There's a water problem. There's water leaking all through the building. People's ceilings have been collapsing. I've also experienced a break-in, and they literally just sent someone just to come re-glue, re-glue the panel, and that was it. The city inspector told them they needed to fix that problem because it's still a safety hazard. They still never came. All they did was send someone the date of and say, hey, someone's there. Like, there was no prior communication or no heads up. I was at work, I have a job. We all have jobs. The landlords need to take our demands serious. All we want is them to just fix our repairs. This is, this is our living conditions. This is where we live and I lay our heads. They do not have to deal with this when they go home. So they want us to pay, but yet come home to steal no hot water, water leaking everywhere. That's just not fair to us, and they shouldn't think that's fair. We need them to take everything that's serious because we don't have a problem with paying anything. And also, I would definitely like our aldermen to be supportive in the tenant union. I definitely need him to step up a little bit more and become more involved because this is becoming a problem. They have now been serving forty-eight hour notices, five-day notices to people, but yet they still do not want to fix the problem that's going on with the buildings. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Scarlett Johnson.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, hello, everyone. Uh, I want to start today by thanking Mayor Brandon Johnson for standing up for the youth of this city and using his veto on the SNAP curfew ordinance that was voted on last month. I was in audience that day when city council voted, and I was so disheartened and disappointed to hear the racist reactionary attacks against Chicago's youth from far too many here in city council. Attacks that seemed straight out of the, out of the crumbly super voter base. These attacks are how the racist climate of Trump is manifesting in our city. In these difficult times, we need to come together as a city and protect our youth and their futures. Fund the peace book ordinance and not pass legally dubious ordinances that will increase the youth contact with CPD and thus increase their chance of serious harm or loss of life. This curfew is a pale attempt at real public safety. The real public safety we can build through community control of the police that can be created with the community control of the police, that can be created with the community power over policing ordinance. Another way we can get real public safety right now is by ensuring there is no collaboration between CPD and ICE. You can do that now by releasing the body cam footage of the officers who are collaborating with ICE in the South Loop facility. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Gabriel Miller.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Welcome.
Good morning. As a member of the Chicago Alliance Against Racist and Political Repression, an organization fighting to stop police crimes, I want to thank Mayor Johnson for vetoing the racist SNAP curfew ordinance. We support your willingness, Mayor Johnson, to stand up against reactionary attacks like this one that threaten the democratic rights of Chicagoans. Not only is the SNAP curfew ordinance a lawsuit waiting to happen, it's also a racist piece of legislation aimed at increasing contact between black youth and CPD. In the same city where police murdered Laquan McDonald, Dexter Reed, and Adam Toledo, our youth need a system where working and oppressed people have power over CPD, not the other way around. Beyond giving CPD greater scope to repress black and brown youth, this ordinance also threatens any gathering of people, including protests. Chicago's history of struggle is something to be proud of, something to build on, and we will not let this backwards ordinance get in the way of our collective struggle for a better city. It also is not lost on us. This proposed curfew fits hand in glove with Trump's sleeping attacks against all working people. Shame on the alders who contributed to this reactionary climate by supporting this ordinance. Even as this curfew is defeated, we will continue to fight for real public safety. We will fight to pass a budget amendment, take money away from CPD misuse of overtime vacancies, investment in youth jobs, mental health centers, youth support ordinance, even that trauma, and other important investments that actually help the people of Chicago. And most importantly, we will fight to win the referendum for community power over policing. So that the people of Chicago can determine for ourselves who we start to use our power to defend. Only making that happen.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Priscilla Tito.
Hello, good morning. Uh, my name is Priscilla. I'm a youth organizer, um, and I'm from the west side of Chicago, Austin. Um, I'm here today to say thank you to the mayor for vetoing the SNAP curfew ordinance, and thank you to every single alderperson that stood by his side and is standing by his side. Um, young people need investment. They need spaces in their communities where they feel appreciated, where they feel valued and not criminalized. Um, this summer alone, my organization hired over a hundred students um, through One Summer Chicago programs. Um, and every single one of those students tells me that there's a lack of spaces in their community where they feel safe, where they could hang out with friends. Spaces in the community that are deemed accessible aren't. They criminalize them, push them out, make them feel like they're a burden. Um, so that's why I think we need to continue the investment of year-long jobs and programs. We should establish more community-oriented spaces, create affordable and recreational activities. Our youth deserve to thrive and be in community and not limited through ordinances like this. So thank you to all the other people that are standing by our mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Leila Ambrosio Salgado.
Hi, my name is Leila Ambrosio. I am nineteen years old. I'm a youth housing organizer. I have lived in Belmont Craig in my whole entire life, and I, my older person is gonna be, is Felix Cardona. To me, the Northwest Housing Preservation Ordinance is important because it is there to protect the kind of housing that has shaped my life. I live in a three-flot in Belmont Craig, in homes that are affordable and allow big families like mine to stay together. When I left for college to Bentley University, Massachusetts, I realized that how unique and valuable our houses are in Chicago. In other places like Massachusetts, I barely spotted these affordable, affordable buildings. These homes are more than just buildings. They're where culture, connection, and community grow. Losing that could change everything. It could change the way we move, the way we support each other, the way our neighborhoods feel. The Northwest Housing Preservation Ordinance is fighting to protect that specifically. They are working to make sure that people like me, my family, my neighbors are staying rooted in the communities that we have built. Um, that's why I stand with the ordinance, because I will not sit down and watch the feeling of home disappear. To me, my, to my alderman Felix Cardona, please stand by our constituents. We need protection and a bigger voice. We want to do your, we want you to do your job right. Reconsider this project, please. Finally, let's support communities' demands for a full investigation on CPD's action on June 4th. We're safer when ICE is not in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Linda Gregory.
Hi, I'm Linda Gregory. I'm here because I, I woke up this morning, and I'm, I'm just a mom. And my children, I'm with a program called South Side Together, and we are bringing, um, the community together for, um, just to, uh, for kids to have something to do. It's, it's so amazing that my children get up every day and they go to this program that, that was just created. And I'm, I'm so amazed. I, um, the, I, I came today because the, um, it just reminds me of my childhood when they had an ordinance of, um, curfew, curfew, and it didn't work back then. I don't think it's gonna work right now. So we shouldn't punish our children. We should, um, be bracing them for entrepreneurship, you know, because a lot of the jobs right now is, is leaving. And then we should, the technology is, it's a lot of things that's going on right now, and we just want to prep the children for the future. For, um, so I'm starting a, a game called Alternate Creativity Freedom, and I just want to, uh, bring the children into, because they, I wanna get on their level. Like, they, they like to play games, and I, I wanted to give them a way to make money by playing a game. So the reason why I'm here is, um, today is I just want somebody, they believed in me as I was a child. They, they took the time to, um, when I was messing up and doing bad things, they took the time to love me and told me, girl, don't do it this way. Don't, don't do it that way. They took time and loved on me, and that's what we should do for the children, to love the children and show them a better way of doing things. Thank you so much. I tell my children every day, you're smart, you're wise, you're intelligent, your mind is open and ready to learn something new. Just because it's hard don't mean you can't do it. You could do hard things, you can do incredible things. You can, and you will. Thank you so much for the time. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Laura Goldberg.
Hi, my name is Laura Goldberg. I live in the Thirty-Fifth Ward. I have been a Chicago resident for thirteen years, and I've lived in and around the city for my entire life. I work at the Natural Resources Defense Council, NRDC, as their Midwest Regional Impact Director, and I've worked on environmental and affordability issues in Chicago and the Midwest for the past seventeen years. I care deeply about this city and region and want to see Chicago leading on critical environmental justice issues. That's why I'm here today in strong support of the Hazel M. Johnson Cumulative Impacts Ordinance. Early in my time at NRDC, I had the privilege of meeting and eventually working closely with Hazel's daughter, Cheryl Johnson, now the executive director of the amazing organization People for Community Recovery, the environmental justice and affordable housing nonprofit that Hazel founded. I learned about Hazel's legacy and the decades of work she led here in Chicago and at the federal level, pushing for fair, equitable treatment of the people in her community of Altfield Gardens and similar communities across this country that have faced serious health consequences because industry was placed over people again and again. This ordinance is an opportunity to honor Hazel's legacy and continue her fight for clean air, environmental justice, and fairness in how decisions are made. Decades of harmful zoning and land use policies have concentrated the most toxic polluters in Chicago, especially in communities of color. These zoning decisions pushed heavy industry into already disinvested areas with devastating effects. This ordinance proposes common sense updates to our zoning code to make the process more fair, more transparent, and inclusive of recommendations from community voices. It would bring more opportunity for meaningful participation by residents and their alders, and ensure that the full picture, the cumulative impact of past and present pollution, is considered when evaluating new industrial proposals. Importantly, this is not a blanket restriction on development. It is not unnecessary red tape. This ordinance specifically looks at a narrow class of the most intensive pollution generating industries and tasks them with making sure their impacts on the surrounding landscape are understood, rather than, um, simply giving them the right to do so. This ordinance is a smarter, more equitable approach to planning and permitting, one that will prevent future conflict, reduce health and environmental harms, and build trust between communities in the city. Chicago has a chance to be a leader on this issue at a time when federal environmental justice rules, including the ones Hazel fought hard for, are being rescinded by the current administration. Hazel's legacy is on the line, and this is an opportunity to support her community and those just like it. I ask the city council to review and vote yes on the Hazel M. Johnson Cumulative Impacts Ordinance when it comes up for a vote. Thanks for your time.
Our next speaker this morning is Brenda Solozano.
Hi, my name is Brenda Solozano. I live in Pilsen in the Twenty-Fifth Ward. I work for Family Focus. Family Focus serves communities across two thousand square miles around Chicago and surrounding areas. We do, we serve people regardless of their immigration status, and we're also members of the Illinois Coalition for Immigrant and Refugee Rights, also known as ICER. ICER played a strong leadership role in developing and advocating for the Welcoming City Ordinance, as did many of our city representatives, which restricts city engagement in immigration enforcement. We were therefore appalled to see what happened this past June 4th at the ISAB location in the South Loop. We showed up to the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights meeting earlier this month to ask for transparency related to the Chicago Police Department's involvement and accountability for any violations to the Welcoming City Ordinance. To recount the events of June 4th, the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, also known as ICE, lured people who were already subject to electronic monitoring to show up on short notice, only to get abducted by ICE when they reported. We saw Chicago police officers setting up perimeters around the ISAB site, and apparently communicating and possibly cooperating with ICE agents. This deployment appeared to violate the Welcoming City Ordinance as well as the Illinois Trust Act, which prohibits police cooperation with immigration enforcement across our state. This incident happened as ICE is continuing, continuing its onslaught against our communities and against our institutions. ICE is using our State of Freedom of Information Act to get records from our police department. ICE is also trying to get information from our city clerk regarding people who applied for the City Key Municipal ID Program, a program we worked really hard to limit what information gets collected. And to carry out their hateful national deportation quota, Trump has deputized agents from across federal government to focus on our neighbors and family members during operations like the one on June 4th. Let me be clear. ICE exists to separate families, cause fear, and disrupt normalcy in all, in all of our communities, immigrants and citizens alike. A crucial step toward accountability in our city and our state will be approving the order approved by the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights directing the police and other city agencies to share their records and incident as part of an investigation. We hope the entire council will approve this order and take further steps to demand CPD accountable, demonstrate transparency, and protect all of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Your Honor, there are no further speakers who have timely signed up for the public comment period.
Very well, thank you to all the public comments. Today, now we move forward with resolutions. But before we do that, there are six alders that wish to make acknowledgements. So what I would ask is that for each alder that is making the acknowledgement, that you be the only speaker, and that we move with some expediency. Have a very full agenda today. And with that, the first acknowledgement will be from Alderman David Moore, who would wish to acknowledge the Leo Catholic High School Boys Choir. The chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I got some other directions from your team, so I'll, but I'll be quick.
Thank you very much.
I would like for the interns from Learn Charter Schools just to stand and raise their hand. We always gotta recognize our young people when they come down. So I appreciate them for being down here.
Thank you.
But what you stated, I am just so excited. And, and I know everybody, or a lot of people, watch America Got Talent. And in Chicago, on the south side of Chicago, in the Seventeenth Ward, in Auburn Gresham, we have the Leo High School Boys Choir, world-renowned Leo High School Boys Choir. Y'all make some noise for them. They are under the leadership of the President Dan McGrath, who had the knowledge and the foresight to hire a principal by the name of Dr. Shaka Rawls, who then had the foresight to hire a young lady by the name of Yolanda Horton, who's the coordinator and community partnership and student engagement for college persistence. But more importantly, years ago, and she's recently retired, but she's still working with these boys, Ms. Ladonna Hill, who is the music and choir director for the, um, world-renowned Leo Boys Choir, who took them to AGT, and they touched our hearts. They, they stole our hearts. They made us cry with their rendition of "They Belong, We Belong." And I appreciate them, and we're so excited. They made Chicago proud. They made the South Side proud. They made all of us proud. So again, give a big warm welcome, and, uh, thank you for the boys, Leo High School World Renowned Choir. Thank you so much. You may be seated. The mayor may have some comments later on, but we're gonna, um, continue to move on because we got a long meeting. Um, if you all will, um, my colleagues bear with me. The, um, this city, within the past few months, lost two major icons, and Pastor L.K. Curry, whose son is here, Pastor Augustus Curry, from Atlanta, Georgia, um, and also Paul Stewart. and also Paul Stewart, who's a deacon there. But everybody also know DC Curry, if you ever watch Friday After Next, his son. But Pastor Curry was a leader here in this city and served at Emmanuel Baptist Church for many years. Alderman Stephanie Coleman is going to speak more to that. But we also stand in honor of, thank you, Mayor, for honoring Mama Ludella Evans Reed the other day. You did a great job. And if everybody know, Mama Lou was one of the five founding members and the last founding member of Fellowship Missionary Baptist Church under the leadership of Reverend Clay Evans, and she passed two days before her 95th birthday. Our hearts are broken, but I promise you, the life she lived and the way she died taught us many lessons. And so if you all don't mind, my colleagues, and everybody standing in a moment of silence for Dr. L.K. Curry and Dr. Ludella Evans Reed officially known as Mama Lou.
Very well, thank you, Alderman Moore. If we could just stand for a moment in silence of these two great leaders and champions.
Thank you all so much. And then I'm passing this on to Alderman Stephanie Coleman.
The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to officially, as both Chair of the Chicago Automatic Black Caucus and proud Alderman of Pastor Ladonna Hill of the great Leo Mill Course, I did, let's give him a hand of applause one more time. I do want to recognize the family and trustees of Emmanuel Baptist Church. We are joined with Pastor Eddie Williams. Will you please stand? Pastor Augustus Curry, who was here from Fayetteville, Georgia. Trustee Kenneth Gunn. Trustee Thomas Long. And of course, Emmanuelite trustee Paul Stewart. Dr. Curry was truly a man and father of faith and education. And Emmanuel Baptist Church, then Emmanuel Christian School, has been a pillar in the Auburn Gresham community for over 50 years. And we are so grateful for 98 years of Bible teaching, Bible preaching, and fearing man of God. So I am so grateful for you all. Alderman Moore mentioned some of the greats that have come out of Emmanuelite comedian Don DC Curry, Grammy Award-winning J. Ivy, the first, last, and only cannabis czar in the city of Chicago, Mr. Paul Stewart, and of course, a girl from Inglewood that is leading in the 16th Ward, and so many doctors and attorneys and pastors, even our friend Pastor,
Him.
Him, in Texas, that I can't think of. But we are so grateful for the life of you. Thank you for joining us and thank you for allowing us and our mayor an opportunity to honor such a great man. Thank you. As it relates to Dr. Ludella Evans Reed, there are not many words because we were able to in 2022 give Dr. Mama Lou flowers, yet while she can smell them. And to all of the members of Fellowship Baptist Church of Chicago under the leadership of Pastor Reginald Sharp, the only thing that we can say is, "When peace like a river attendeth my way, when sorrows like sea billows roll, whatever my lot thou hast taught us to say, it is well, it is well with my soul." And we know that there is a new name written in glory by the name of Ludella Evans Reed. Thank you, Mr. President, for this opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Moore and Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman. And now Alder Minah Hoppinworth would like to memorialize Bob Newhart. The Chair recognizes Alder Minah Hoppinworth. Very well. Alderman Sixcho Lopez is next. He's not in the room. I know Alderman Conway would like to acknowledge the 250th anniversary of the U.S. Army. The Chair recognizes Alderman Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 12 score and 10 years ago, on June 14th, 1775, the United States Army was founded in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. George Washington was appointed to lead this army the very next day. And for generations since that, the U.S. Army has proudly stood ready to answer our nation's call, representing the very best of what America has to offer. Whether in times of conflict, times of peace, at home or abroad, Army soldiers have always placed the mission first and served with honor. So I am proud to stand and recognize all those who have worn the uniform and those who paid the ultimate sacrifice to protect our freedom. And this 250-year milestone is a testament to the Army's timeless principles and represents the collective strength of the American people in the face of great conflict. Now, as a U.S. Navy veteran myself, I am honored to recognize not only the soldiers themselves, but also the families who have supported them through every deployment, every homecoming, and every sacrifice, as I could tell you, my wife and children could justify as well. The strength and support of these families is incredible and worthy of our praise. Chicago proudly stands and celebrates its many, many Army veterans and soldiers, products of our very own neighborhoods and hard-working families throughout this city. At this time, I'd like to recognize the Army veterans with here with us today, specifically Mr. Steve Herman, who is civilian aide to the Secretary of the Army, as well as the leadership team of the U.S. Army Chicago Recruiting Battalion, and also our own Alderman Chris Tellya Pharoah, who is an Army veteran as well. So please, please stand up and be recognized and any other Army veterans we have amongst us. Thank you all for your service to our great nation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sixcho Lopez.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to recognize an important part of our ward. We represent Pilsen, Little Village, and also the University Village, University Commons Neighborhood Association. I'd like to recognize, I know here is Cecilia Salinas, Chloe Cogle, Chloe, John Tiapegas, and Matthew Chloewick. If you can please rise to recognize you. I think that they were still in the back, I was looking for them. But they are, they represent the University Commons Neighborhood. And today, we celebrate 100 years since the founding of the South Water Market, a cornerstone in the Chicago's economic history and a hallmark of the 20th century urban planning and architecture. The South Market, the South Water Market was the largest product or market in the United States area. And 75, for 75 years, and in the last 25 years, this is an example of urban development and the character of our neighborhoods to redevelop now a community-driven development and now a vibrant neighborhood that is part of the 25th Ward. We take the occasions to celebrate and reflect on the contributions, not only of the margin class, the architects, the labor force, and the civic leaders that continue to make vibrant neighborhoods and wards like mine. And that is why we present this resolution presented to the University Commons Neighborhood Association and as a token of gratitude to the cities, from the City Council, gratitude and admiration for them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise in recognition and tribute of the great Sister Rosemary Connolly, beloved member of our community who passed away peacefully at home at Misericordia Heart of Mercy on June 19th. I wanted to recognize her loved ones who have come to honor her today. We have Father Jack Clare. If y'all would please rise. We have Father Jack Clare, Kevin Connolly, Lois Gates, Bob Noga, Julie O'Sullivan, and we have two mayors here today, Misericordia resident Mayor Terry Morrissey also with us here. Sister Rosemary joined Misericordia on August 20th, 1969, and went on to serve the community for 56 years. She devoted over half a century of her life to the residents of Misericordia and changed the lives of thousands of children and families. Those who have seen the work that Misericordia does or have even sampled any of the baked goods know of the impact that Sister Rosemary and the organization have on our city, but on more than just our city. It's particularly appropriate that we are putting forth this resolution on Disability Pride Month because it would be hard to find a fiercer advocate for people with disabilities than Sister Rosemary. She believed deeply in every person's right to, as she said, every person's right to, as she said, "A life and one worth living." When she first started out at Misericordia in 1969, there were no services for children with disabilities. She responded by creating a model of care for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities that is now recognized nationwide and serves more than 600 children and adults each year. We're talking about people having a full life, occupation, responsibility, a sense of duty, and understanding that before Sister Rosemary was on the scene, that did not exist. We owe so much to Sister Rosemary. She is an embodiment of the motto she had inscribed on her ring, "Love serves joyfully." I am extremely proud to introduce this resolution declaring August 20th as Sister Rosemary Connolly Day for the model she provided us all for how to serve our communities with love and joy. We will miss her deeply, but we know her legacy will live on in Misericordia and the city of Chicago. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alder Vasquez. Next, we have Alder Rodriguez, who would like to make an acknowledgement. The security guards at Little Village Longdale High School. The Chair recognizes Alder Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And it's a, it's a special opportunity for me to recognize two heroes of our community, two individuals, Officer Richard Christian, School Security Officer Richard Christian, and School Security Officer Hector Rodriguez, for their courage and their commitment to safety of our students. Officer Christian has served CPS since 1996, nearly 30 years of service, but he's also the head coach of the football team at the school. And Officer Rodriguez, unrelated, is a lifelong Chicagoan of 57 years, and he is a mentor and coaches youth baseball at the school. Recently, at our Little Village Longdale High School, both officers acted bravely and quickly in a moment that could have ended very differently. You see, their response helped protect against the abduction of a young girl. Not only did they stop this abduction of this young lady, they also followed this individual and led to the arrest of this alleged perpetrator. They deserve our heartfelt thanks for their work. You know, I was, I was there in 2001 when we had a hunger strike for a high school there at 31st and Costner. I was there every day of the hunger strike, although I ate, I was one of the youth organizers. But I remember entering the school in 2005, and shortly thereafter, Officer Christian was one of the first employees of the school. And not a couple of months ago, I was there for an all-day chess tournament where 500 students were at the Little Village Longdale High School on a Saturday, and Officer Rodriguez was there, making sure on his time off, he was supporting our school community. Those are just examples of what these two guys are. They're the best of us, they're black, they're brown, they're unapologetically leaders in our community. And I want to thank them for going above and beyond their job of duty to make sure that our young students are safe and secure. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you so very much for serving our community. And please, give them one more round of applause.
Thank you, Alder Rodriguez. Next, we have a memorial tribute to Officer Pete Berkovich, who's an officer here at City Hall. The Chair recognizes. Thank you very much. And the Chair will then recognize. Very well, those are all the acknowledgements that we have. We will now move for our resolutions. We have three resolutions today, celebrating Disability Pride Month, honoring Doug Bruno, and honoring Craig Delamore. For. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris. In your move for the temporary suspension.
Suspension of the ruse to allow us to hear the resolutions.
For immediate consideration.
Immediate consideration, sir.
Very well, thank you for that move, hearing no objections. So ordered, in the interest of respecting people's time today, we will forego reading the resolutions and go straight to the remarks from City Council members. Again, our first resolution is celebrating Disability Pride Month. The Chair recognizes Alder Laspada for closing remarks, right?
I would prefer to close, yes, thank you, sir.
Are there any other? The Chair recognizes Alder David Moore. I'm sorry, excuse me. Yes, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Mitz.
Mr. President, I'd like to be recorded present for a roll call.
Very well. Would you please add Alderwoman Mitz as present? Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to be recognized as present for the purposes of.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Could you add Alderman Riley to the roll? The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Good morning, Mr. President. I'd like to be recognized as present for purposes of roll call.
Very well, we can do that. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Good morning, Mr. President. Please add me to the roll as well.
Very well, thank you. All alders will be added to the roll. Chair recognizes Alderman Moore to speak to the resolution in honor of Disability Pride Month.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in support of this resolution. First and foremost, I want to thank our Commissioner Rachel Arfa for doing such an excellent job in that department. We talk about accessibility, and she's a person that is very accessible. And accessible because we have a lot of veterans and people with what I call abilities in our community. And South Side Occupational School is a school that's in my ward from us doing Special Olympics with them and just giving them an avenue to work real jobs. And that's what I like. They add so much value to our city in many ways. And we have to make this city more accessible and user-friendly for them. And that's what I'm continuing to work towards. And so everybody here, I appreciate and I honor each and every one of you as we celebrate this day. God bless you, and thank you so much, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Ramirez.
First, I do want to be recorded as present. Thank you so much, Clerk.
Welcome.
Awesome. Hi, everybody. Good morning, good morning.
Morning.
Commissioner, you are absolutely wonderful.
Just a second, Alderwoman.
Yes.
Just a second.
Yeah.
There's just, there's a few folks that are clearing out. Let's allow these students to clear out, and then you can.
Wonderful.
Begin again.
Mr. President, I'm good.
You sure?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, thank you.
Okay, awesome.
Please.
Okay, good morning once more. Commissioner, you are wonderful. You light up the room. I am so grateful for the work that you have transcended here at the city of Chicago. I'm lucky and fortunate enough to have not just colleagues, but friends in the box today, like Nick, Eli, Laura. Thank you so much for everything that you guys continue to educate. I'm so glad that we get to celebrate you today, I think now more than ever, especially in this political climate. You guys make sure that we remember what it means to be inclusive, empathetic, and have this pursuit of equality for really all people. In my journey throughout my education as a social worker, I watched a documentary on the disability movement in the 70s. And it was really transcending of the work that I was unfamiliar with. And so I appreciate the ways in which you guys educate, not just the city of Chicago, but the work that you guys do at a state level and especially nationally. As I know, Nick, I follow you on TikTok. You guys have to follow Nick Boyle. Really proud of the work that you've been doing and the work that you look forward to do in DC. So I just really want to thank everybody in the, in the box and just really talk about the activism that you guys inspire for us and how it transcends and really conveys the mission at hand and the essential fuel for all social and cultural and political movement that you guys inspire today. So thank you so much.
Thank you. The Chair. The chair recognizes Alder Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. To all of our guests in the box, thank you. And Alder Woman Ramirez, she said all the things that were kind of fantastic, so I want a plus one to everything that she said and just add that in our current climate, your fight, your work, and everything that you show up for, putting your bodies on the line for all of us, is so important. So I thank you for all the work that you've done, but also the work that we have to do. I know these are scary times, but know that, you know, 49th Ward has your back, you represent the 49th Ward, and we're all together in fighting for the continued rights, visibility, and services that are due to your community, because the disability community is one of the few communities that represents all of us, all of us. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Matt O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. I think it's important to note when we talk about this, the Special Olympics movement started right here in our city. Millions and millions of athletes across the globe have participated in Special Olympics programs. It started here on July 20th, 1968, at Soldier Field. That is an unbelievable thing to say, that that started here in Chicago. I'd like to also recognize my colleague Alderman Vasquez, recognized Sister Rosemary Connolly, a living saint. She was. I worked closely with her for many years at Misericordia, and what a terrible loss. I can only hope that others are willing to pick up that mantle of what Sister Rosemary did, advocating and fighting for those in our disability community. I'd also like to recognize the many schools I have in my community that have cluster programs for our special needs population. Mount Greenwood Elementary School, Cassell Elementary School, Clissold Elementary School, Barbara Vick Early Childhood Learning Center, and the Chicago High School for Agricultural Sciences. The second-largest population offering programs citywide for our community. And finally, Special Children's Charities, an organization I've been involved with for many years, were the ones that put on the Chicago Polar Plunge. We are committed to continue working with you, Commissioner Arfa, to supporting your mission. We are committed to working with supporting programs in schools and parks all across our city. Thank you very much for this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes... The chair recognizes Alder Matt Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning. I want to take a minute and acknowledge Victoria Prince, who is the service coordinator at Silent Co-op, where she has worked for the last 27 years, helping residents and members across our community thrive by assisting with access to meals, healthcare, utilities, providing wellness checks and others. Victoria's parents were both deaf, which meant that as she was growing up, she had a keen understanding of how important it was for them to have an advocate and a voice, and has made that experience a central part of her life and her work at Silent Cooperative. This is an organization that opened in 1985, and it made it the nation's first housing cooperative specifically designed to ensure safety and community for deaf and hard-of-hearing residents. And while this terrific organization now serves residents with a wide range of physical disabilities and other needs, prioritizing specialized care for deaf and hearing impaired members remains a top priority. I want to uplift their work and say thank you on behalf of a very grateful community. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Manah Happenworth.
Thank you, Chair. Today, Chicago celebrates Disability Pride Month by honoring our past, acknowledging our present, and reaffirming our commitment to fight for a more inclusive and equitable future for all. Thank you, Commissioner, for people with disabilities, Rachel Arfa, who collaborates with many groups, such as a group near and dear to my heart, Access Living. And thank you for Laura and Nick for being in the box today with us. Shout out to my colleague Daniel Laspada in the 1st Ward for fighting with coalitions on policies that benefit us all, including Plow the Sidewalks, of which the pilot is coming to at the 48th Ward, and we're very excited about it. Our first disabled U.S. President was Franklin D. Roosevelt. He was a survivor of polio. Unlike our current sitting president, FDR used his platform as a legislator-in-chief to protect the rights of our human dignity and of our most vulnerable. In June of 1934, he announced that he was going to undertake the great task of furthering the security of the citizen and his family through social insurance. FDR unified the country at a time of great uncertainty and planted the seeds for our current social safety net. FDR passed the Social Security Act in 1935, which created the senior and unemployment insurance systems we have today. People with disabilities and allies continue to be at the forefront in the fight for equity and human rights, and we are fortunate to have many of those fighters in the box today. Thank you for being here. Representing the great 48th for Disability Pride Month is Sarah Hollenbeck. Hi, Sarah. Sarah Hollenbeck is a co-owner of Women and Children First Bookstore, a trans-inclusive shop in Andersonville, one of the last remaining feminist bookstores in the country, whose mission is to celebrate the writing of women, people of color, LGBTQ+ authors, and other marginalized voices. Sarah and I served on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee at the Andersonville Chamber of Commerce. Her community values are reflected in providing a safe and equitable working environment for her staff with co-owner Lynn Mooney. When not at the bookstore, you can find Sarah chasing her very active three-year-old around in their favorite neighborhood parks. As a graduate of Northwestern University's MFA program, Sarah's writing has been featured in several literary journals, including her essay, "A Gold Mine," which won the grand prize in the 2013 Dogwood Literary Contest. She has been nominated for a Pushcart Prize and received a notable mention in Best American Essays. Her essay, "As Long As It's Healthy," appeared in the anthology Nasty Women. Sarah's work grapples with sexuality, femininity, physical disability, and gaze, often exploring how we perceive ourselves, how we are perceived by others, and the tender space in between. Sarah, you're an entrepreneur, a community connector, a writer, a mother, and I'm proud to call us friends. In the face of threats from the federal level, localism matters more than ever. And today, Chicago recognizes local leaders in the box today, including my friend Sarah Hollenbeck for Disability Pride Month. Please, Sarah, stand up so we can recognize you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. After two years, it's really nice to see you sitting down. First and foremost, I stand in support of this resolution. I want to thank Commissioner Arfa for her transformative leadership. I think when we think about the office of people with disabilities, we want to ensure that we are advancing the city of Chicago to provide the most equitable opportunities for every citizen in the city of Chicago. And I cannot think of a better person to do that work than Commissioner Arfa. So first and foremost, thank you for all that you do. Second, I want to acknowledge someone that I invited to the box today. Her name is Senaida Lopez. She's lived in Humboldt Park for a very long time with the Lopez family, and I've known Senaida since the age of 15. And there is no one I've seen who can work as hard as Senaida, traveling across the world, whether it was around the fight for the freedom of her brother, Oscar Lopez Rivera, whether it's around educating people around anti-colonialism and all the things that Puerto Rico needs or right on Division Street, where she runs El Rescate, an LGBTQ shelter for young people, ensuring despite their abilities or despite their gender or sexuality, they can get the housing that they deserve. And so I'm so excited to have a leader like Senaida in our community, but to also know that she provides no limits on herself. She will go across the world, even if it means that she's in physical pain. And often, I see her walking on Division Street or attending a protest or maybe coming to an aldermanic event, trying to overcome physical pain. And I just, I want to say thank you, Senaida. If people in our community have not told you thank you for your leadership, I want you to know that the 16-year-old Jesse that you mentored and the older person at the 26th Ward thanks you for your leadership and all of the work. Often, people with disabilities are not affirmed, dignified, or even recognized for their work. But more importantly, we know that there are still systemic barriers in the city of Chicago that make it quite difficult for people with disabilities to get jobs, to lead, to be agents of change in our community. And with the Commissioner, with the mayor, with the office, I am confident that we will see a new day in the city of Chicago, and it is because of people in the box like you all to make this an important moment, but more importantly, a step in the right direction for our city. So Senaida, thank you, Commissioner, thank you, and everyone in the box, congratulations.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Nicole Lee. Chair recognizes Alderman Will Hall.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I rise to, first of all, recognizing a young man who has been an advocate for his brother, Nick Boyle. Nick has been a true fighter for those with any disabilities of any kind, and, Mr. President, he left our campaign to continue to fight for his brother. And so I'm grateful for his witness and his work. And I'm grateful, lastly, for our Commissioner, Commissioner Rachel, who has been most hospitable to anyone, especially those who don't have voice and heart. And so I'm grateful for this resolution, standing in support with great pride for the work that's being done in this city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, are there any other Alders that wish to speak? Because Alder Laspada wishes to close. Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I stand in proud support of this resolution. We can acknowledge a lot of the accomplishments that organizations like Misericordia, as I mentioned earlier, and others have done, but I really would like to devote the time more to make a stronger commitment than we have as a city. When we think about how we build our city, how people get from one place to the other, we have done a disservice to our disabled community. We have not yet done the work necessary to make sure that people can access every inch of this city equally. And what we know is that when we, as a city, accomplish that goal, it makes everything easier for all of us to be able to access. And so whether it's trying to identify some of the traffic signals to make sure that our folks that are blind are able to cross the street properly, even some of the crosswalks not being where they need to, I know that we have tons of work to do, even at that very base and fundamental level. And so what I would ask of each of you is that you challenge us, that you don't accept anything less than what you deserve when you're here in Chicago, whether it's Access Living or other organizations, or just neighbors in each ward. Definitely reach out to our offices, come to our offices, and demand that we do the work necessary to create the city that everyone can enjoy, and it's not everyone until you all are included in every facet of it. So thank you so much for everything that you do, and our commitment is to continue to be here to work on the legislation, but push us. Don't accept anything less than that kind of work from us. So thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Woman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I too rise in support of this resolution. Thank you to everybody in the box for everything that you do every day to make our society more inclusive, so that all of our, all of our community members, our friends, our families can live and exist in whatever way they want to in everyday society. I went to a high school that happened to have a hearing impaired program at Whitney Young High School, and it was the first time that I'd been exposed to individuals with disabilities. And you know what was great? They were just like we were. We had the same interests, we had the same hopes and dreams and struggles as teenagers, and it really gave me insight as to what it's like to live in a world that's not really built for you. So it's all the more important, the work that you do every day, to ensure that we have a society that is inclusive. I also had the great fortune to do some work with Special Olympics as well, and it is wonderful that it started here in Chicago and that we have this rich heritage. And I think one of the things that I have taken away from those experiences too is that it goes beyond just being treated equally, walking around, being able to get around, but how do you support yourself in all of that too? So, you know, as older people, I think it's really important for us to continue to look for opportunities to promote job opportunities for people with disabilities, both visible and invisible. Let's not forget about those as well. So as we are celebrating Disability Pride Month, I just want to echo the thanks and gratitude for all of the work that you continue to do, and know that you have support from this council to further pursue all of those things. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the final two speakers, unless otherwise, we have Alderman Irvin, and then Alderman Laspada for the close. Very well, the chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rise in support of this resolution. Disability is something that, in many cases, happens in an instant. I am grateful to the work of the disabled community. Just a personal story, one day, my mother-in-law passed. My wife has a disabled sister who now resides with us. And when you begin to see up close and personal the challenges, the resources, or lack thereof, it kind of brings an awareness to you that you sometimes don't think. It's like you don't have children, so you don't think about certain things. But I will say this, I am pleased with the level of interest and advocacy that I see MOPD doing, the commissioners doing, on behalf of a good section of our population, because, believe it or not, there are more disabled people than you believe. Just because you may not be able to see the disability, it does not mean it does not exist. So continue the good work that you all are doing in the department, continue the advocacy for disabled community, as Alder Vasquez talked about, from our visually impaired to all of our disabled community, that we continue to advocate and make sure that the resources are needed, because that could be us. We always have to think about that. You could be one banana peel or one accident away from having to be in a state where you need constant care. So again, let's be mindful, let's think about those who may not be able to take care of themselves. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. For our final speaker on this resolution, the chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very glad to stand in support of this resolution. Our colleagues are right, disabled Chicagoans are more individuals than we think. In fact, in talking to Commissioner Arfa earlier today, she reminded me that one in four Chicagoans self-identifies as being disabled. When I think of this resolution, I think of my parents, both of whom struggled with disabilities towards the end of their lives, my dad from Parkinson's, my mom from severe workplace-related injuries. And when she was older, and I thought about my mom potentially moving out here to be closer to us, I thought about how would she access most of the housing around us in the 1st Ward? I thought about how would she possibly be able to access most of the public transit stations around us? And it made me angry and frustrated to think about the city that we would have been welcoming her into for all the progress that we are making. I'm very grateful for everyone in the box. I'm particularly grateful to see Adam Ballard here, who is one of the most talented organizers I have ever known. I'm very grateful to have Laura Saltzman and Carol Lepari here from Access Living. Your organizing, your advocacy, the intersectionality of your work, the gutsy accountability that you bring to all of us, I deeply appreciate. I am so grateful to have Jean... I am so grateful to have Jean Drew from Esperanza Community Services with us. The way you helped me to be clear-eyed about the challenges and the potential facing a lot of folks in Chicago with deep disabilities. And I want to speak to that because I'm trying to be magnanimous and I try to be apolitical. But to say, to pretend that disability is not a matter of urgent political concern in this country is to be dishonest. So let's talk about that. Let's talk about folks who talk about autism as an epidemic, who say that it destroys families, that it is an individual tragedy, and say that the tragedy of autism for children is that they will, quote, "never pay taxes" and "never hold a job." That is abhorrent, it's gross, and it's nonsense. Because I want to say, I know a lot of folks with disabilities who are civil rights attorneys. I know folks with disabilities who are therapists, who serve in elected office and in government. But it is not your work or the amount of taxes that you pay that makes your life have value. Everyone has intrinsic value, has intrinsic dignity, and is worthy of our care and compassion and respect. So let's all be deeply clear on that. I could go in depth. I could examine all of the systemic issues as colleagues have talked about today. But I'm going to talk about that briefly and close. Let's talk about the Americans with Disabilities Act. We have a banner that celebrates 35 years of that act. And I'm grateful for that. And I'm grateful for the work that we've done. And I know that any municipality within employment over 20 people, more than 20 people in the room, is required to have what's called a transition plan. And this comprehensively outlines the barriers to accessibility in a city, the timeline for addressing those barriers, and who are the responsible leaders. And in those 35 years, Evanston has a transition plan. Cook County is on their second iteration of that plan. Chicago in 35 years has never had a transition plan. We can do that. We can do that. That's the call-in to the city. And I know that the talent and capabilities are in the room. And on behalf of the folks in this room, I want to share my commitment to seeing that transition plan become a reality. Thank you, Mr. President, for your leadership, for your honoring of this work, and for being a part of this resolution today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So every July, we come together to recognize and honor our disability community and commemorate the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act. This year is a milestone year as we celebrate 35 years of the ADA. When you came to City Hall today, you can see that we have put up banners and the Disability Pride flag to honor this milestone. We will also honor this anniversary on Tuesday, July 22, at Malcolm X College. Unlike other protected classes, anyone can become disabled and join the disability community at any time of their life. Disability can be acquired as a result of gun and community violence. And we are here to support all those who have experienced violence and as a result, has led to a disability. I honor our disability community who fought and advocated for the passage of the ADA. This year, on the 35th anniversary, we are still fighting to protect so many civil and disability rights. This year's anniversary is even more important as we work to ensure that people with disabilities can continue to live, work, and play in our beloved city. And this is why our Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities is working so hard to ensure that the disability community has access, resources, services, and full support that's needed to live safe, productive, and successful lives. I will continue to champion disability rights alongside of our Commissioner of MOPD, Rachel Arfa. This month and every month, we not only celebrate the work that has been done, but we also continue to commit ourselves to this important work as we aspire to achieve the promise of the ADA. My administration is committed to making Chicago the most accessible and inclusive city in the entire world. And that is why I'm proud to join you all in the recognition and the celebration of Disability Pride Month. Thank you all very much. So the Commissioner Rachel Arfa, Eli Brotman, Nick Boyle, Bernardo Gomez, Joanna Wagner, Adam Ballard, Caleb Ballard, Victoria Prince, Sarah Hollenbeck, Jane Drew, Michelle Garcia, Zenaida Lopez, Carol Lepari, Laura Salzman, Hugh Woodson, De'owen Avery, Bob Shia, Edgar Edrino, Cesar Mendez, and all those in the box. Again, we celebrate you and we thank you. Thank you very much. Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for the passage of this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passage and the honors.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. As the box clears, we'll prepare for the next resolution honoring Doug Bruno.
Mr. President?
I got you. While the box clears, Alderman Viegas has requested to participate in today's meeting remotely for reasons stated in Rule 59. Can we just confirm that Alderman Viegas is online?
I am present.
Alderman Viegas, are you present?
Present.
Alderman Viegas is present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to approve the remote participation and have Alder Viegas added to the roll call? It's been moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the Chair, the ayes have it. Madam Clerk, please add Alderman Viegas to the roll call. Are there any Alders that wish to speak to the upcoming resolution? I know Alderman Nick Spazato has requested to speak first. If you wish to be acknowledged, please raise your hand and we'll add you to the list of speakers. Very well, thank you. The Bruno family is now seated. The Chair recognizes Alderman Nick Spazato.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for honoring this great man. A ton of accomplishments. Unfortunately, a coach and mayor, and you only got one page here, but you probably deserve more like a phone book of accolades. So, but I encourage my colleagues. If you don't know who Coach Bruno is, Google him, check him out. He's truly a legend, not just in Chicago, but throughout America. He's done a ton for women's sports. Women's sports not only in Chicago, but throughout the nation. Unfortunately, he's in a tough, pretty tough division nowadays, but, or the end of his career, but he still had a great career. 725 wins, I believe it was, Coach. So if you get 75 wins in a career, that was a pretty damn good career. So just want to say we appreciate you for all you did. It's an honor and a pleasure to be here. Excuse me. Honor and a pleasure to be recognized here for this great accomplishment. So I wish you the best. I know, hopefully, the program's in good hands. I'm sure they are, to keep up the good work that you have done. Also, everybody, I think it's certainly a Chicago record for most wins. Is that, did you win more than Phil Jackson? I think so. Right. So just, just thank you so much, Mr. President. He's a great individual. He's just done so much for the city, so much for women's basketball, women's sports. So I just appreciate and it's an honor to honor you today. So best wishes to you and your family. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very well, thank you, Alderman Spazato. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Pat Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am truly excited to be able to be a part of this resolution today. Doug, I know you and I are both making a sacrifice being here today because the Sky are playing right now, right? But I wanted to say that you are a trailblazer for women's basketball and a cheerleader for the sport. And I want to just give you your flowers today. 38 years as the coach of DePaul's women's team. You've helped to make basketball, women's basketball, important in the city of Chicago. I appreciate the attention that you and DePaul University gave to Lynn Park with the creation of a new basketball court, new lights, everything that you've done for the sport. I'm going to go back a little ways because I don't know if people know that you were the first coach of the Women's Professional Basketball League for the Chicago Hustle. And I had an opportunity at one time to be a member of that team. But you all only paid $28,000 a year. And I just couldn't, I just couldn't do it. And I became a social worker instead, a move that I've never regretted. But I thank you for, you know, being, laying the groundwork for the WNBA and for being one of the best coaches in America to take young girls and to teach them how basketball can transform their lives, how it can help them be competitive, how it helps them to play a sport that many people don't really think girls and women should play. So I thank you for your contributions to the city of Chicago, to the United States, and this particular sport. And may you find happiness and peace with all that you're going to do in your retirement. Thank you so much. I love you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dow. Chair recognizes Alderman Knutson.
Thank you, Mayor. Coach Bruno, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the 43rd Ward and Lincoln Park community. There's no doubt you've been an incredible coach with an incredible legacy. But that also means a lot to DePaul and the greater neighborhood of DePaul. We talk a lot, members in the box, about how DePaul Athletics is an attraction to the community, how most of the athletic games are free now, which is incredible. Anyone can come and watch them. So when we were talking about this as a team yesterday in the 43rd Ward office, we dove into some fun facts about you, of course. I've got a different win number than Alderman Spazato said. I think you shortchanged him a little bit. I've got 786 wins. So we'll go with that. We'll go with the higher number, of course. But also, I want to just recognize that you and your wife Patty are parents to six sons and with 12 grandchildren. Is that correct? So that's a pretty incredible team right there, I would say. And I know your coaching extends to that. I know you're not done. You're not done being a strong community member. I love seeing you out at our meetings. And I just want to say congratulations to you and good luck on this next chapter. It'll be an exciting one. And also to just, you know, say how much we support and are fans of DePaul from the 43rd Ward office. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Chair recognizes Alderman Hall.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. As an alumni of DePaul, walking through the campus, especially during game days and after game days, the win on the court was one thing. But thank you for always being humble, approachable, and setting out wins through the character that you displayed off the court. And so not only did you inspire us as students, but you inspired us to come to games and to be a part of a community that is better because of your presence. So thank you for wins on the court and off the court. And go Blue Davis.
Very well, thank you, Alderman Hall. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak? The Chair recognizes Alder Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Your resume speaks for itself, Mr. Bruno. I cannot thank you enough for all that you have done for our city, for our state, men and women. And when I'm just looking over this resolution and seeing all of your accolades and how successful you were as a coach, I can't help, the thing that sticks out to me is that you've mentored 80,000 young athletes. 80,000 young athletes. And as anybody who's played sports, but especially basketball, I know Chairman Dow and Alderman Spazato mentioned earlier, I know they played basketball in their careers. There's a lot of life lessons in basketball. I think anybody who plays any sport learns life lessons. But to think that you have had an impact on people's lives, not only as far as their athletic careers, but who they've become as a man, as a woman, as a father, as a mother. It's incredible. And I couldn't do it justice in a speech. But I just want to sincerely thank you upon the countless number of souls that you have had a positive impact on. And I'm sure those same people that you have had a direct impact on, they have had an impact on other generations to come. So from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank the Bruno family and thank you for everything you've done for our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Raymond Lopez.
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning, members of the committee. Actually, I just rise because I know the coach is chomping at the bit to impart some wisdom on us all. So I would move leave of the body to give him the opportunity to speak before us today, when appropriate.
Okay, so you don't want to add anything else? Just leave to allow the coach to speak? It's not my decision. All right, so if there are no other speakers, then leave from the body. We'll allow Coach Bruno to get us all hyped up.
I asked 100 times, am I going to have to speak today? And I was told 100 times, no, you will not have to speak. I just want to make sure that I acknowledge and thank everybody. No coach, no player achieves any athletic success by themselves. It's called a team for a reason. Every success of any individual athlete on any individual team is the result of the team. And I just can't thank enough my team for the years, my DePaul team who is with me here today. You know, my athletic director, Dwayne Peavy, my longtime athletic director and former player, Gene Lenti Poncetto. These people, you could not do this without them. Jill Hollenbeck, who is here as an associate athletic director. Taylor Stapleton. I just can't thank all my staff at DePaul University, my bosses, enough. I, I just can't thank all my staff at DePaul University, my bosses, enough. I can't thank the players through the years. I can't start mentioning all these players because they've all been just so, so good and faithful to this DePaul University program. The fans, the people that come and watch women play sports. It has not been easy to get the jaded male fan of America to appreciate that females can play athletic sports and team sports just as well and just as entertaining as the guys that play team sports. So I, I can't thank you all enough. And most importantly here, and I'm sure I've forgotten a ton of people, but I've been blessed to have a great supportive coach's family. No coach can do this without a family. The family sits there at home and does all the hard work behind the scenes while you're out there coaching other kids' kids. My wife Patty sits here, six children of her own, their beautiful, six, their beautiful wives, six sons. In fact, so there's six beautiful wives, four beautiful wives that are actually married. But a lot of beautiful wives and these grandchildren, 12 grandchildren. So I've just been very blessed. And I'm rambling on enough. Alls I want to do is just tell everybody, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach Patricia Bryan-David, Brendan Patrick Bradley, Dwayne Peavy, Taylor Stapleton, Jill Hollenbeek, Peter Coffey, Jill Pizzari, Jean Lente Poncetto, and Joe Poncetto. To all of the members of the Bruno family, special shout out to Detective Bruno, who's doing an amazing job in our police department. We recognize that you are not just a coach, Mr. Bruno, you are Chicago's institution. And for decades, you have led DePaul University's women's basketball program with unmatched passion, integrity, and grit. I'm just gonna do what politicians do. I'm gonna round up to almost 800 wins, countless NCAA tournament appearances. You have built and shaped lives, empowered the young women, and elevated the game of basketball in our city. Northwest side of Chicago, graduate of Quigley Preparatory Seminary, DePaul University. Coach Bruno, your roots are profound and you are Chicago, Chicago. Having played for the Demons under the legendary Ray Meyer and went on to make his own mark in DePaul's history. Becoming the head coach in a great year, 1976, and as Alderwoman Dow indicated, coaching the Chicago Hustle. So thank you for opening up pathways for women's basketball to be what it is today. You have produced All-Americans, WNBA players, Olympians, while keeping education, teamwork, discipline, and community service front and center. Coach, you represent Chicago on a national and international stages, including serving as the assistant, assistant coach to two U.S. Olympic gold medal-winning teams. You're a Hall of Famer in every single word, not just in title, but in spirit. You have mentored generations of athletes. You led with heart. You never once forgot the community that raised you. You brought pride to Linkin Park and to DePaul and throughout the city as a whole. So today, we don't just celebrate a coach. We honor a leader, a teacher, and a son of the greatest freaking city in the world, the city of Chicago. Here's to Coach Bruno. Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for the passage of this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passes in the honor of this.
Hearing no objections. So ordered. We just have one more resolution. So as the Bruno family exits the box, we'll prepare for the last resolution. This final resolution is in honor of the career of Mr. Craig Delamore of WBBM News. If you wish to speak to this resolution, please raise your hand and we will record you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Michelle Harris.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to be associated with this resolution. Mr. Delamore, 42 years of a beautiful career. What an amazing life lived, especially hanging out with the likes of us. What a beautiful career. I have wonderful memories of you in your early days. I was fortunate enough to be raised by my parents and our radio was locked on WBBM. We were not allowed to touch it. No matter how long the trip was, no matter where we went, we was listening to WBBM from till we get down somewhere down in Mississippi and it would just cut off. And so today, I have all these wonderful memories of when you actually came on radio and were listening as we took those wonderful trips every year to Mississippi in the car. And so my parents, and even in our home, was locked on WBBM. So when I became an Alderman, I was down here, I was like, oh my God! My favorite radio personality! And so you have been an amazing example of what a media leader is and someone who is always fair and compassionate and telling a story. So today, I'm here to say thank you for being a gentleman in radio and in news and leading, always leading in the perfect story, always being, delivering a real story and giving us real information behind the story. You have been an amazing example for me. You have lifted me up in your stories at issue, the family we listen to at issue on a regular basis. So I am so grateful that you have been a wonderful part of the thread of City Council. And your influence will always be remembered, will always be part of what we do here in City Council. You will forever be a part of what makes Chicago great. So today, I am grateful that you're moving on to a new part of your life for whatever your reason. But I'm telling you, I'm gonna miss you. So thank you so much again for all your commitment to getting the story right.
Thank you, Alderwoman Harris. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to be associated with this resolution. Craig, I just wanted to say that you've had a stellar career in journalism in the halls of this building and outside of the halls of this building. And as someone who knows about life in South Jamaica, New York, which is where we bonded, how we bonded, I just want to tell you, I appreciate your professionalism. You know, sometimes I don't like talking to the press, but I knew if I talked to you, it would always be fair and balanced and within context. How about that? So I thank you for just being a part of Chicago and telling our stories from what happens inside this building. I wish you and your wife and son well as you move forward in your retirement. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dow. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too enthusiastically rise in support of this resolution, although it's bittersweet. I think we can all agree. I'm so glad you're here today, Craig. I, I was, I was caught unaware of when your last day was going to be in the office. And I thought I was not going to have the opportunity to do this recognition of all of your accomplishments. Craig, you know, the, the first time I met you, I got so excited. It was probably my most exciting moment, my fangirl moment, when I met Craig, because I'd never seen Craig Delamore's face before. I had only ever listened to him on the radio. Because my father listened to WBBM News Radio all the time. So you, you kept me company in the car, too. And when I met you, my face lit up. I was like, oh my God, you're Craig Delamore! It was one of the coolest moments of becoming an Alderman for me. But what's been more precious to me has been getting to know you. I will miss being able to walk out of council meetings or committee meetings and see you sitting at your desk and knock on the door and just come have a chat with you about the craziness of council, about how your father's doing, how your family's doing. I want to thank your wife and your son, your family for sharing us, sharing you with us because you've been one of the greatest gifts to the city of Chicago, to all of us here with the work that you've done, the reporting that you've done, and really the friend that you've been to me. So thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Chico.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Craig. You were my first radio interview. And although I was a little nervous, you put me at ease and you made me very comfortable. And after we did the half-hour interview, you forgot to hit the record button. So they called me the next day and say, can you do it again? And I gladly accepted because it was you and your professionalism. So thank you once again for everything.
Thank you, Alderman Chico. The Chair recognizes Alderman Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in support of this resolution. And let me start by saying, Greg, you've always been this, like, this smooth guy. And, but when I saw your wife, I was like, man, you smoother than I thought. She is so beautiful. And, no, she is, come on now. But when we listened to you, we used to call you "The Voice." I mean, you may not see anybody, but what gets you to listen, first of all, something got to capture you. And it was two things for me. The voice and then the, the way that you tell the story. You capture it, but not only do you capture it in a way that someone can feel it, but then you get, you get truth, you get fairness, and you get integrity. And that's what you've been to this, this industry and media. If you wanted the truth, we hear a lot of stuff, hey, let's listen to Craig Delamore and see what he's saying. And you can then get through with some of the people's emotional things or people in media who trying to just sell rather than get to the truth and have integrity and fairness with the story. Del Marie Cobb, who I work with closely, has been a big fan of yours and you guys have worked together. But it's exciting to know when you have people like my state senator, my favorite state senator, Jackie Collins, who have worked with you at CBS where, where you guys met. And when someone like that respects you, because she is well-respected, that shows the type of person that you are. So I want, I wish you well and joy. Do not bug her. She called me and said, you bugging her too much, I'm coming to get you, Craig. But she said she gonna have you in that basement working, though. And, but thank you, young man, because you've had to share him with so many as a son. And we say thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts. And just enjoy your retirement, enjoy your family. God bless you.
Thank you, Alderman Moore. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sigcho Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I also rise in support of this resolution. And I had the opportunity and pleasure to, to have several interviews with Greg over the years. And I think he exemplifies the integrity, fairness, and, and real comprehensive research of journalism. And today, more than ever, I think that it is important to recognize important and invaluable contributions that such reporting plays in our communities. I think that today, I think we all see the importance of the voice of Greg and WBBM and the many other outlets, when I had the opportunity to see him in action. And as someone that have talked to him in detail about Mayor Washington initiation, he came to Chicago right about that time in a historic moment. And what, what a journey and what a way to, to wrap it up and full circle, to come here to City Council after decades of critical and, and fair reporting. It is important to recognize, so I want to thank you, Greg, on behalf of our communities because fair and journalism with integrity like you make our messages possible. Without that, I think that the task of elected officials is even, even harder. So on behalf of the 25th Ward, we rise in support and I wish you well, you and your family in your well-deserved retirement. Thank you for the service of communication and informing our communities to the city of Chicago.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Nick Spazatto.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Boy, this is well deserved. You had a, you had a grand slam with this one, Mr. President. We never got a chance to say goodbye on his last day. I was all bummed out about it and kind of left three days before the last council meeting, I believe. But Craig, you're an honor to work with, you're a pleasure to work with, and an honor to get to know you. I will say one thing about you and no disrespect to some of, some of the other press over there, but I, I don't think anybody did not answer the phone when you called. So like, I know some of my colleagues, I think when some of my colleagues get called from some of you, they don't answer them. But when Craig calls, everybody answers. So I just want to say congratulations. It was a pleasure to know you, work with you. You're always a, just a pleasure to deal with. And I do think you got a great side business going. And I think voice-overs, you're the guy, robocalls, political robocalls, call Craig. I'm, I'm starting them off on a new business. Got a great soothing voice. But Craig, best wishes to you and your family. You're an awesome individual. Enjoy the rest of your life and God bless you and your family. Thank you so much, Mr. President, for this one. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Will Hall.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. The first time I heard your voice was on the radio. My dad wasn't a fan of rap. And so hearing your voice as a child, growing up, and then finally meeting you at St. Sabina with Father Mike as Senator Collins was sitting in the second row or first row, allowed me to see what strong dedication to our city looked like. And coming down to the hallways of City Hall, you've been consistent in expressing the truth behind what happens behind the curtain and what happens behind the door. So thank you for your consistency and thank you for being a role model to me as a young man on what it means to serve a family and celebrating your son. Every time I came in, you had something to say about your son. And so to see the son that you talked about along with the wife that held you down, it's a day to remember today in Chicago. Thank you so much, Craig.
Thank you, Alderman. The Chair recognizes Alderman Scott Wagisback.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Delamore, Craig, thank you for your cordiality from day one. When I first started in 2007, kind of walking into these halls was a very interesting thing to do when there was, you know, sort of a mayor daily way of running things. I just want to say that, as Alderwoman Harris said, you've been a true gentleman throughout my time here in the council, and I really appreciate that. I appreciate that you were always well-informed, I think, before you asked questions, which made your job hopefully a lot easier when you were talking to us. But it was also a pleasure to talk to you each time. You know, and listening to you on the radio, listening to you on things like, I think, Weekend in Review or some of the shows where you were a contributor with several other journalists, reporters, was always interesting because you, you always were able to kind of piece things together for the portion that was discussing City Council. And I never had to sit there and go, no, 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 that's not what happened. You were always right on topic. So I just want to say thank you for all those stories and, and contributions that you've made over your time here in City Hall. And I hope that in your retirement, you can take a lot of hikes and enjoy that time out in the open space. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Craig, I, I think, there's only one other person I think that's been in this building longer than you, and she's kind of been in and out. I think you are our resident encyclopedia on the ins and outs of our doings in this council. You have been, I've been honest and been someone, I think, that has been fair to all of us, even the good, the bad, or the indifferent. And we appreciate you coming from our community, giving a perspective of what's happening and the impact that it has on our community. So we appreciate your work. We hope you enjoy your retirement. And I agree with Alderman Spazatto about another business line for you. If you need your first client, come holler at me. We will put you on. Thank you and God bless you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Julia Ramirez.
Craig, you are an icon. Your voice is therapeutic. It's amazing to hear the many stories of my colleagues and the way that you've transcended the airwaves of, now I'm realizing, all cultures, all ethnicities, all ages as well. I will say, I do get nervous when I'm around you. It makes me emotional actually being able to speak in front of you today. I mean that wholeheartedly, that when I didn't want to be in the news is when you spoke to me the first time. And there's been many other times that I've crossed you in the hallways and I almost wish that I do get a chance to speak to you. And so hopefully, I can take a picture with you now that it is your last day. But thank you so much for everything and the way that you've influenced the way that we get news down here in City Hall. So the best to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. The Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Burnett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Also stand in support of this resolution. You know, Craig, it's a funny thing. My first classes in college, one was a journalism class and the other one was like a political class. I did better in the journalism class than I did in the political class. And one of the things in that journalism class that I took, they express in that class that journalism, in journalism, you have a higher duty to the public. A duty not to be biased, but a duty to give people options to think about what's going on and make their own opinion. Craig, that's what you do. You don't be biased, you don't use... You don't be biased, you don't use your own feelings, you just give people the news and you allow them to make their opinion of what's going on. I want to thank you for being fair. I want to thank you for being truthful. Uh, I would say I'm gonna miss you around here, but me and you probably be seeing each other outside of here. But I want to also thank you for all of the conversations that we had. I mean, you're such a nice guy, uh, easy to talk to. And like everyone said, nobody runs from you. Uh, if, if Craig Delamore comes in the room, you're not like, okay, uh-oh, here come Craig, right? Everybody looks forward to talking to you because you're such a gentleman. So I want to thank you for your service to the public, to the people of Chicago. Thank you very much, Craig. Pleasure working with you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too stand in support of this resolution honoring Craig Delamore. If you pull City Hall or a gathering of government staff or professionals at a reception or a party, no one has a bad thing to say about Craig Delamore. And that's because he's fair, he's inquisitive, and he's a gentleman. And being a gentleman seems to be a lost art in the era of shock and awe media and the gotcha text or tweet. Uh, but Craig personifies respect and integrity and kindness, consideration for others, and it has a strong sense of responsibility. Craig is a true gentleman. And in interviews that I followed with Craig, he references being a good listener and giving a voice to communities that didn't always get coverage, like the South Suburbs. Now, we, when we in the room at some point look to retire or to move on to different roles, how are others going to describe us? And I think we all hope to be referred to as a gentle person. And if you currently would not meet that criteria, I encourage all of you to work on it, myself probably included. So Craig, thank you for your fairness and your kindness and your commitment to the profession. And in your case, I would say vocation of journalism. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Knutson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Craig, I couldn't go this meeting without just saying thank you as well. I think similar to what a lot of people have mentioned is, um, really have enjoyed interviews with you. Uh, good memory we have together. I remember we did an interview during the convention on the steps, uh, the Chicago, on the Chicago River. And, uh, even just, you make people very comfortable in interviews, which I'm told, don't get too comfortable, right? It's still an interview. Um, but once the mic went off, speaking with you, I've had a really good time and hearing you on, um, Fran's podcast, for example, reflecting on your career. It's a really fascinating career. I mean, your view on Mayor Harold Washington, the rise of President Obama. I'm hoping after this, you think about writing a book, doing a podcast. It's a little bit different because I'm sure your stories are endless and stories that a lot of us just want to hear. Um, so I, I, I just want to say thank you. I know that the whole City Hall press corps is really going to miss you. We all obviously are going to miss you in here. But we're not strangers and we'll be, we'll be friends. So congratulations.
Thank you. It's a lot of job applications for a brother who just retired. Chair recognizes Alderman O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this resolution. How nice is it for your family to hear such heartfelt words from a room, even this room? To the other media here, you are an example of what a gentleman can be. To be fair, to do the research, it's, it's been said many times. You did the research. You didn't just go into an interview. You looked up things up. You knew what was going on before you walked into that room. And you're always fair. And I've heard it more and more and more. You're a gentleman. You truly are. Uh, these last several years, it was always nice for me to walk down that hallway and take a look. And if you were sitting there, I'd always stop and we might just talk for a minute or two. When we were talking, um, uh, about your son's former career in, in law enforcement and, uh, we used to talk about you a lot. I'm just gonna miss you because you're just a good person. And to your family, I hope you get to spend a little more time with them. Hope you get to travel. But I hope you're not done because I really think, uh, a podcast or a book or something should be in your future because, uh, you got a wonderful story to tell. All the best.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Hailu Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also wanted to, um, thank you for reporting with the heart, for always saying the truth about the work we're doing here. Thank you for that report that you did last year about me being the first woman in office having a baby. It was really kind of you and to share that story because many people maybe didn't know, but how you growed it, how you spoke about it, make me feel that, yes, we're in this fight together and it's an inspiration for more women. And it, and it was because how you spoke about it. If it would have been by someone else, maybe it would have taken another route. But you truly always are an inspiration. Um, how you always talk about issues here in the council and out there in our communities. Thank you for always leading with truth, saying what is really happening. And we will really miss you. You will always say hi to us with a big smile, always also pumping us up. You know, sometimes there are hard days, but you're always there. Um, and we will really miss you. And I wish you a blessed retirement, to enjoy with your family, travel, and wake up late, right? Sip that coffee at home, having not to rush downtown in the traffic as well. Thank you for all your work and I know you're gonna continue to report on some little things out there. Not as right now, you really have a good retirement, but I know, uh, and I hope you continue to report on, on issues. So we continue to hear you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Raymond Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, members of the City Council. I rise in support of this appointment of Dale as the replacement of Craig Delamore in, oh wait, wrong retirement, I'm sorry. It is a tradition here in City Council to replace ourselves with our children. So I was hoping we could sneak one in. Oh, you know I love you. No, but I, I wanted to rise today, Mr. President, because I think back of all the interviews that we've had, we don't get to laugh as, as much as we should with our reporter friends. Um, because though we are sometimes at odds because of the nature of the business, we are still human beings. And I believe that that is something that you never lost, in appreciation for the humanity of the room. And so many of us today have recognized, um, our role in that and your role in that and how that has permeated with the family that you've brought here today. Um, so I wish you Godspeed in all your endeavors. I urge you to ignore all the calls to go back to work because retirement should be exactly that. You've put in your due. I think at some point, you know, we'll have a, a memorial wall of all of our news media that have spent decades in this room, reporting not on us, but reporting for the people of the city of Chicago. Your value as journalists cannot be understated. It's something that is enshrined in the Constitution, a free press. But that also requires the press to be able to do what they need to do, to ask the questions, to be available, to occupy that room, which is right next to us, to make sure that the press room is right here, right there, right there, and even upstairs, to make sure that the answers that people care about are being presented in ways that are understandable and relevant and not just being regurgitated by politicians. And I think that's something that no one can ever say is true about you. So thank you for 10 years of being together here. Thank you for sharing him with us. And thank you for being a model for all of them over there who are typing away. Because in this business, the reporter should never be the story, but you are the story today. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Alder Haddon.
I too rise to be associated with this resolution. Um, hi, Craig. So I think you were my second, the second after I won the first election. My second media appearance, uh, I believe, was on your show. And, um, it was so cool to get to go to the studio. I remember just like being nervous and being stressed. I was gonna get to be interviewed by Craig Delamore, get to sit in the radio studio, which is somehow more intimidating, I feel like, than like the camp funding public media. These are scary times where facts, objectivity, curiosity, and what makes us, um, a great country and a great city are all at risk. And you have done so much to contribute to that, that I hope in your spare time, that, um, you find a way to continue to do that. And I have a feeling that you will continue to do that, like, because I don't think you can stop doing that. Um, but I look forward to hearing your stories, um, reading your stories, listening to your stories in whichever way you continue to tell them. And thank you so much for the service that you have given to the people of Chicago.
The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would be remiss if I didn't rise and congratulate you on your retirement. Um, you know, I'm the second longest-serving Alderman here that has worked with you. And, um, only a few Aldermen here today actually remember the times where we used to actually play a softball game against the press. Uh, it was the Alderman against the press. And that was an opportunity for us to work with the press and, you know, have a relationship outside of this particular building to understand the press is not your enemy. The press are people doing their jobs. And that was a great opportunity for us to really just have a, um, a, a relationship outside of this body. But Craig, you have always been steadfast. You have always been even-keeled, the same person, you know, I don't think anybody's ever seen you upset. Maybe your wife and your son, but we have never seen you upset, um, because you were always even-keeled. And I would tell you, when I, when I first got here some years ago, I would always look at you and say, why do all the other reporters have a small recorder and this guy has a brick hanging off of him that he's carrying around with a microphone? I say, is he ever gonna update his technology in order to, uh, report his stories? But I understood and I understand it now. Um, but I just want, again, to congratulate you, man. This is so well worth your retirement. The fact that you've worked all these years and just have a stellar career without a blemish. And that is something to really hang your hat on, man. So congratulations, many years of happiness. Enjoy your retirement and please, when you walk out the door, don't look back. Thank you so much and God bless you.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak to this resolution? Very well, seeing no other hands. Thank you, Barbara and Dale, for being here. Senator Collins, thank you for being here as well. You know, before coming to Chicago, um, Mr. Delamore had the opportunity uh, to work with the Associated Press Radio in Washington DC. Uh, but, but coming to Chicago, Mr. Delamore provided a great deal of dedication and hard work that allowed him to rise to the ranks and eventually becoming the political editor of WBPM News Radio in 2001. Throughout your career, you have been able to cover countless news stories from national political conventions, landmark events, and of course, the changing political landscape here at City Hall. As been stated, your fairness, your depth of knowledge, and your respect for all sides is what has earned you the accolades and the awards, um, from your peers and of course, the people of Chicago. I will also just say and conclude with, thank you for your dedication and all of the contributions that are being felt and even as people go down memory lane. It's, um, it's a very powerful testament, uh, to know that you are leaving a legacy for posterity. With more than 40 years of dedication, I hope you do get the rest that you need and deserve. And as you embark upon this new adventure, I hope that you breathe and take it all in. So I'm very proud to, to honor you today and thank you for your indelible contributions to not just radio and news media, but to the people of Chicago. Alderman Mitchell, can I get a motion for the approval of this resolution?
Mr. President, I move passes in the omnibus.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
As I move, that we return to the regular order.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. Communications, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Communications from the Honorable Mayor to the Honorable City Council of the City of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development. I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement with Steep Theater Corporation to provide TIF funds for improvements at the Steep Theater. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development. I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement with 105 Adams Development LLC to provide TIF funds for improvements at the Clark Adams Building. Your consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on finance. At the request of, uh, the Commissioner of Housing and transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of TIF assistance for adaptive reuse of the building located at 135 South LaSalle Street. Your consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, the quest, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development. I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of a TIF redevelopment agreement, After School Matters Incorporated, to provide funds for improvements at the After School Matters Orleans Teen Center. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on finance. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing the execution of redevelopment agreement with Rage Economic Uplifting Project LLC to provide neighborhood opportunity funds for improvements at 1210 West 59th Street. Your consideration for this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee of budget and government operations. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Procurement Services. I transmit here with an ordinance amending section 2-92-490 of the Municipal Code regarding the removal of certification fees. Your consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on contracting oversight and equity. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Procurement Services. I transmit here with an ordinance amending the Municipal Code to add the Non-Construction Small Business Initiative Procurement Program. Your consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the committee on contracting oversight and equity. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development. I transmit here with an ordinance authorizing as amended 2025 Budget and Service Provider Agreement with Quad Communities Development Corporation of Special Service Area 47. with Quad Communities Development Corporation of Special Service Area 47. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith ordinances authorizing favorable tax incentive classifications for specified properties located within the city. Your consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing dissolution of the Chicago Community Land Trust. Your consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Housing, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property located at 5230 North Lincoln Avenue. Your favorable consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, at the request of Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith ordinances authorizing the sale of city-owned properties. Your consideration of these ordinances will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, request the Commissioner of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorize the execution of an amended redevelopment agreement, the Center Court Development LLC, the sale and redevelopment of city lots. Your consideration of this ordinance will be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Housing and Real Estate. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit an ordinance amending the Municipal Code Regarding Residential Search Warrant. Your consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Police and Fire. Ladies and gentlemen, the request of Department of Planning and Development, I transmit herewith an ordinance authorizing the execution of service provider agreement, the Magnificent Mile Association for Public Safety Improvements in the area surrounding the casino. Your consideration of this ordinance be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Public Safety. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments of various special service areas. Your consideration of these appointments be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. Ladies and gentlemen, I transmit herewith appointments to the City Colleges Board. Your consideration of these appointments be appreciated. Very truly yours, Brandon Johnson, Mayor, for the Committee on Education and Child Development. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, hereby inform the City Council that the following documents were filed in my office relating to respective subjects as follows. Executive Order Number 2025-2, amending Executive Order Number 2023-14 concerning procurement and payment for contracted vendors and development projects executed. Executive Order Number 2025-3, concerning City of Chicago's Skill-Based Hiring Determination Certificate of City of Chicago Regarding Issuance of Up to $40 Million Water System Line of Credit Notes with PNC Bank, National Association on City Revolving Line of Credit Agreement dated March 14, 2012, Notification of Sale City of Chicago General Obligation Bond Series 2025A, Notification of Sale City of Chicago General Obligation Bond Series 2025B, Notification of Sale City of Chicago General Obligation Bond Series 2025C, and Taxable Services D. Notification of Sale City of Chicago General Obligation Bond Series 2025E, Notification of Sale City of Chicago General Obligation Bond Series 2025F, and Taxable Series 2025G. Cities Funding Requirement for Chicago Police Men's and Annuity and Benefit Fund for Year 2026, and Report of Firemen's Annuity and Benefit Fund of Chicago, for Certification of City Funding Requirements for Labor and Laborers and Retirement Board Employees, Annuity and Benefit Fund of Chicago for Tax Levy Year 2026, Payment Year 2027, Office of Inspector General Second Quarter Report for Year 2025, Civilian Office of Police Accountability Quarterly Report for Period ended June 30, 2025, Expression of Opposition to Proposed Zoning Reclassification of Property at 5710 North Broadway, Expression of Opposition in Proposed Zoning Reclassification of Property 5718 North Broadway.
Rules stating in Rule 59, Alderman Lasbada has requested to participate in this portion of the meeting remotely. Madam Clerk, can you confirm Alderman Lasbada's presence online?
Alderman Lasbada, are you there?
I am present.
All right, Alderman Lasbada.
Can I get a motion to approve the remote participation for Alderman Lasbada? All those in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed, say nay. The opinion of the Chair, the eyes have it. Please continue, Madam Clerk.
Expression of opposition to proposed zoning reclassification of property at 5725 North Broadway, expression of opposition to proposed zoning reclassification of property at 5730 North Broadway, expression of opposition to proposed zoning classification of property at 5734 North Broadway, expression of opposition to proposed zoning classification of property at 5200-6350 and 5101-6351 North Broadway, expression of opposition to proposed zoning classification of property at 1110-1110, 1100-1110 West Graville Avenue, 1113-11117 vers Granville Avenue, and 6172 North Winthrop Avenue, expression of opposition to proposed zoning classification of property at 5246-5306 North Winthrop Avenue. I, City Clerk Anna Valencia, inform the City Council that all those matters which were considered by the City Council at the regular meeting, held on June 18, 2025, which were required by state statute to be published in book or pamphlet form, or in one or more newspapers, were published in pamphlet form on July 16, 2025, being printed in full text and printed pamphlet copies as journal proceedings of the City Council of City of Chicago. I, City Clerk Valencia, also transmit herewith the following miscellaneous communications or reports requiring City Council action. Zoning classifications of particular areas with the referred to the Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards, items against City of Chicago which refer to the Committee on Finance. Amendment of ordinance which was reclassified area shown on map number 20-B for property at 80081-8059-5 Muskegon Avenue, 8008058 South Escanaba Avenue, 8001-8059 South Escanaba Avenue, 8008D58 South Exchange Avenue, 2949-3025 East Eightieth Street, 2948-3024 East Eightieth Place, 2949-3025 East Eightieth Place, and 2948-33024 East 81st Street, which is referred to Committee on Zoning, Landmarks, and Building Standards. The following veto letter from the Honorable Brandon Johnson, Mayor, was filed to Office of City Clerk on June 20, 2025. To the Honorable, the City Council, the City of Chicago, and City Clerk Valencia, I return herewith, without my approval, an ordinance passed by the City Council on June 18, 2025, SO 2025-0016732, regarding authority to impose snap curfews. At a time when violent crimes continue to trend down across the City of Chicago, it is critical that we continue our investments in community safety strategies at a proven track record of success. In two short years, we have seen a measurable sustained decline in crime and violence in our city. It is the focus of my administration to continue working with the full force of government, community organizations, business, and philanthropy to solve a decades-long problem with effective policing and new investments in youth jobs, safe spaces for young people, and mental health care. For the above stated reasons, it is my duty to veto this ordinance. Madam Clerk, please read this letter at the July 16, 2025 City Council Meeting, under the headings of Reports and Communications from the Mayor and Other City Officers. Sincerely, Brandon Johnson, Mayor.
Very well. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications from...
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the recognition. I move to adopt proposed ordinance 2025-16732, which amends Municipal Code Sections 8, 16, 21, and 22 regarding declaration of curfew for masked gatherings and custody procedures as previously adopted by this City Council at its regular meeting of June 18, 2025, notwithstanding the mayoral veto submitted to the City Clerk on June 20, 2025, and transmitted to this body during this meeting. And, Mr. President, I would ask for an immediate roll call vote on my motion. Thank you.
Very well, there's a motion to override the veto. Vote on this motion will be taken by roll call. The question has been called for immediate. Under state law, just for reference, there are 34 votes that are needed in order to override this veto. Members, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. If you need help logging in, please raise your hand. The voting is now open. I will now call on those who have not used the e-voting device for their voice vote. Alderman Lasbada.
No.
Lasbada is a no.
That is correct.
Correct. Alderman Beal. Not present. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a yes. Alderman Viegas. Alderman Viegas is a yes. All those who voted who wish. All right, the voting is now closed.
There are 27 yays, 22 nays. Next up, we have our committee reports.
Your Honor, that concludes the reports and communications from the Mayor and other city officers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For committee reports, our first committee is on finance. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council. Reporting for the Committee on Finance, which held a committee meeting on July 14, 2025, the following items received a due-pass recommendation from the committee. Item number one is the substitute ordinance authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement and the issuance of tax increment financing funds to South Bridge 1C Housing LLC and conveyance of city-owned property to TCB-DS for the project at 2311 through 15 South State Street, also known as 3 through 5 East 23rd Street in the 3rd Ward. Mr. President, unless someone wishes to speak on this item, I move passage of this item by a roll call vote.
Very well, seeing no hands. This motion will be taken by roll call. Members, please use your e-vote application to record your votes at this time.
The voting is now open. The voting is now open. Please use your e-device. All right, I will now call on those who have not voted yet with their e-device. Alderman Lasbada.
Yes.
Lasbada is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. O'Shea is a yes. Alderwoman Tabarez. Tabarez is a yes. Alderman Viegas.
Yes.
Viegas is a yes. Alderman Lawson.
Yes.
Lawson is a yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Lawson is a yes, sorry. Lawson is a yes. It's summertime shy, we get it. The voting is now closed.
Thank you. There are 50 yays and zero nays. This motion passes. On the motion to reconsider, Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Mr. President, motion reconsidered vote.
All those in favor of the reconsideration of this vote signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. This motion fails. The Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number two is an ordinance authorizing the bond inducement for the Home and Square Apartments Phase 4 project at 3607-3621, 3645 West Polk Street, 906 and 908 South Central Park Avenue, and 921 South Lawndale Avenue in the 24th Ward. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number three is a communication appointing Mike Belsky as City Comptroller. Following deliberations on this matter, Mr. President, I move passage of this item by the same motion. I reserve the right to close.
Very well. As Mr. Belsky takes the box, if there are any individuals that wish to speak to this item or this appointment, this will be the opportunity to do so now. Very well, the Chair recognizes Alderwoman Sam Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of Mr. Belsky's confirmation as our City Comptroller. He has extensive experience working in state and local governments and specifically surrounding municipal finance. His reputation in the field is stellar, and he's eager to work with us here in council. In the short time that he has been working with us, he's helped me tremendously and always offers to break down complex financial concepts, and he's even agreed to present one of his municipal bond finance classes to me and my team. So I commend you, Mr. President, on an excellent choice for comptroller, and I'm happy to support him. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Raymond Lopez.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of the City Council. I rise in support of your nomination of Michael Belsky as City Comptroller, and I commend you on your choice. We had the pleasure of welcoming your appointee to the 15th Ward, and while he was able to get firsthand knowledge of what we deal with on a daily basis in terms of enforcement, one thing was very clear to me and to my team. A focus on not leaving money on the table that we should be able to collect simply by enforcing the laws on our streets. Many of us in this council have introduced ordinances to deal with towing, to deal with illegal car sales, to deal with ticket enforcement and things of that nature, all of which is important not only to our quality of life, but to impacting the bottom line of the City of Chicago. We know that we have challenges facing us as we go into the budget season, challenges that he will be a part of, but he is also, with his Department of Revenue, part of the solution. And I believe that if we allow them to be fully funded, fully operational, that he knows how to ensure that his entire team remains a net gain for the City of Chicago when it comes to enforcement. This is what we need in our communities. This is what our residents ask for, and having seen it firsthand, I am confident that we could count on our new City Comptroller to continue the march forward to enforcing our laws as they were meant to be enforced throughout all 77 neighborhoods. So I thank you for your appointment, and I look forward to seeing him officially take the reins in this new role. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Matt O'Shea.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this appointment. Mr. Belsky has an extensive record in public policy, specifically, I think, his work at Fitch Ratings and at the University of Chicago Harris School of Public Policy. In his short time, I've had the opportunity to meet with him and welcome, working with him moving forward. We have a tremendous amount of difficult work ahead of us when we talk about our city's financial future, but he is the right person at the right time to take the comptroller's office. Thank you, Michael, and to your family, thank you for allowing him to take on this difficult role. Look forward to working with you, sir.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not many times do you find someone with the level of experience, both in industry, elected, and academic, that we have here with Comptroller Belsky. The one thing that really took me, anybody that's been in accounting, Gatsby standard... anybody that's been in accounting, uh, GASB standards are not very easy to deal with. And to have someone who's actually set on the G A S B to be our comptroller says volumes about this man's experience, about, uh, his ability to, uh, negotiate a tough situations because GASB work is, is not.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this appointment, uh, for Mr. Belski as the comptroller. Um, he has well-rounded experience, ladies and gentlemen, that, uh, often, in these days, is in short supply from here to DC. Um, I think he will be a great asset for you, Mr. Mayor, and for the City Council and the people of this city. Um, I don't think you can improve too much on the great experience and staff that you have in the Committee on Finance except, or, excuse me, through the Department of Finance, except through adding some of that technology and, uh, more efficiencies that you will see, uh, added to their toolkit. So, um, I hope that what you do is build on that experience, um, you know, work with the staff that are there to do great things for the city in the years to come, and, uh, glad to see your appointment go through today. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderwoman, Woman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this appointment. Um, I've had a couple of opportunities to speak with Mike on the phone, um, in the, I'm gonna have a little Whitney Young moment. He can go Whitney Young, but he did, he comes from the Harris School of Public Policy, as do I, so it's gonna be like that. Um, I guess it's a, it's a prerequisite now for comptrollers, uh, to have an association with the Harris School. Um, but that notwithstanding, uh, one of the questions that I asked you when we talked on the phone was, Mike, why, why do you want to do this? Um, and, you know, I, I was really, I was very struck by your answer, you know. Um, you could be doing a lot of other things, frankly, um, and this is not an easy job. This is no easy task, and the, the fact that you were willing to take it on because you saw an opportunity to help. And I think that resonates with a lot of us sitting in this room today, uh, that in the service of this great city, you're willing to come and do this, and so I, I thank you for that, and really, um, I can't say enough good things about your team. I, I call Chuck Billows only after five o'clock on Fridays, when I need stuff. Uh, but he always picks up the phone, and as does everybody else on your staff. So, um, I wish you all the best of luck, uh, and, and here to, to be partners with you to make sure that we can keep the city on good footing. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Hall.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I stand in support of this appointment. From day one, the conversations have been many, uh, but you've been consistent in the interim. So I'm grateful for the transition to this new complete, uh, position, and grateful for what you've done so far in the Sixth Ward, and making sure that the wrong guys are not parking on the wrong street. So, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise to support this, uh, like, as we, as we talked the other day, um, I really, I really do appreciate you coming. I, I, uh, yeah, you already have a great team. I just think they, they needed a, um, a good leader. I think you are that good leader. Um, you know, I, I had i- issues, uh, with a lot of truck parking in the community, and we already talked about that. You already rolled up your sleeves and, and already talking about hiring more, um, uh, agents to, to work on our, uh, streets. So, I appreciate you wanting to accept, uh, this position and, uh, in the time that we're in right now, and, uh, we definitely need your support and help and your expertise. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, a great choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other Alders that wish to speak? The Chair recognizes one more, uh, Chairwoman. Uh, we have one more. The Chair recognizes Alderman Conway.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Belski, as I said in, in confirmation, my only concern here is you're wildly overqualified for this job. Uh, and, as you know, we face a very difficult time in our fiscal health, and I just wanted to add my thank you for taking this on. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. For the close of this appointment, the Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to commend you as well, um, on this appointment of, uh, Mike Belski, um, as our new comptroller. It was a stellar appointment. As people have already, um, said, he is exceptionally qualified, and, uh, he has deep experience in the municipal finance area. Um, I think he's, I told him, uh, yesterday, or when, at the committee meeting, that I, he's known in the community as a problem solver, but now he also has to be a traffic cop. Um, so, uh, we look forward to, uh, that as well because he rounds out a very excellent finance team in Jill Jaworski and Annette Guzman. So, um, with that, Mr. President.
Before your motion?
Renew my motion.
Just wanted to just shout out real quick, uh, the Belski family, Julia Lynn, Jared Andrew, Brandy, Noah, Zoe, and then we have Mike, Moon Hall, Enza, Fragassi, Joel Flores, Elaine Herman, Chuck Billows, Karan Koka, uh, to the entire Belski family, and all of those are in the box. Thank you for being here. Uh, the motion has been renewed by Alderwoman Dow. Seeing no other hands, hearing no objections, the most favorable roll-call and the subsequent motion to reconsider that failed, so ordered. Congratulations, Mr. Belski. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number four is an ordinance amending the municipal code, section seven dash twenty-eight dash two thirty-five to align the senior sewer exemption and the senior refuse discount program. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number five is a substitute ordinance amending municipal code, section two dash forty-four dash one forty, two dash forty-five dash one ten, and fourteen A dash three dash three thirteen point six regarding lien assignments. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the committee. I rise in opposition to this substitute ordinance. As we discussed in committee, I feel that this is a solution in search of a problem. As we heard, that there were only three properties at the time where, of all the thousands of properties that have liens, only three would be impacted by this. I think there are concerns that I have that went unanswered in committee. There's information that was requested with regards to the amount of total valuation of all debt liens the city currently has across the entire city that has not been shared as of my standing in this moment. And there are some unanswered questions with regards to person-to-person sales, where we are effectively removing debt on a property and then reassigning it to a new owner. There are other ways that we can address these issues, Mr. President. Issues that are already legal, where we would go to court, take a property that has a debt lien assigned to it, put it in our inventory, and then provide a clean bill of sale and title to individuals if we are trying to work with them to provide housing or other things. Quite frankly, Mr. President, this is not the way. I'm not going to defer and publish, but I would like to be recorded as voting no on this item. Thank you.
Uh, despite the division, uh, your motion?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Item number six is an ordinance concerning-
Hold on a second, just make the motion again, Alderwoman Dow.
Uh, okay, I move passage of this item by the same motion with the exception of, uh, Alderman Lopez voting no.
Very well, Mr. Clerk, could you, uh, Madam Clerk, record Alderman Lopez, Raymond Lopez, as a no. Despite the division, hearing no objections, this is so ordered. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item number six is an ordinance concerning the execution of a redevelopment agreement and issuance of tax increment financing funds to Black Ensemble Theater Corporation for improvements of the Black Ensemble Studio Theater at forty-four forty through forty-four fifty North Clark Street in the Forty-seventh Ward. I move passage of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number seven is a communication transmitting reports of cases in which verdicts, judgments, or settlements were entered into for the month of June twenty-twenty-five. This will be placed on file with the clerk. Item number eight A is an order authorizing the Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Felicia Knolls Bradley versus City of Chicago in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll-call vote of the Committee on Finance report and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number eight B is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Gilbert Mendez versus City of Chicago in the amount of two point five million. I move passage of this item by the same motion with the exception of Alderman Spazato voting no.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number eight C is an order authorizing Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Marley Aguilar versus Eric Duran et al. in the amount of three million dollars. I move passage of this item by the same motion with the exception of Aldermen Conway, Hopkins, Beal, Quinn, Lopez, O'Shea, Scott, Cardona, Spazato, Riley, Silverstein, and Nugent, who all wish to be recorded as voting no on this matter.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise again in opposition to this settlement. This was an individual who, in a known area within Brighton Park that I formerly represented, was engaged in activity that was a detriment to the quality of life in our communities, was running from police, and was occupying a space for illicit business that we should not be rewarding today. Had he simply complied, not tried to evade capture for his illegal and illicit activities, we would not be having this discussion today. Many of us, as I mentioned during committee, voted in, in opposition to this, and I would encourage those who have not had the chance to do so to join us in opposition today. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Apolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to be recorded as a no, please.
Very well, hearing no other, the Chair recognizes Alderman Curtis.
Put a no. We just, roll call, please.
Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please record me as a no as well.
Chair recognizes Alderman Chico.
Mr. President, I can't be recorded as a no.
Will we count them all up, Mr. Clerk?
We can, we can do a full call on this.
Alright, there's a motion on the floor for a roll-call vote for item eight C.
Mr. President, I, I, I do want to correct something. This is a gentleman who did not have a criminal record, um, just because he was, he was in the wrong place at the wrong time.
Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I, if, if I, the memory serves me, correct me, I think the police car rolled over this kid's head, and he's got screws, plates, and other things in his face. Um, I understand the gentleman's point from the Fifteenth Ward. Again, our chairman has stated, the man had no criminal record. Uh, just because I happen to be somewhere, I happen to live somewhere, does not make me a criminal. I think we need to think through some of these items, uh, and look at the other side of this picture. Now granted, you know, we got challenges, but he's a man with no criminal record, car rolls over him, crushes his head, and we want to argue over that? I, I, I think we gotta start thinking a little deeper than that, sir. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. There's been a motion, there's a request for a roll-call vote on item eight C. Madam Clerk, could you make the application available? And members of the City Council, please use your e-vote application to record your vote at this time. Item eight C.
The voting is now open, the voting is now open. Please use your e-device. If you need help logging in, please raise your hand. The voting is now open. I will now take a voice vote for those who not use their e-device. Alderman Laspada.
Alderman Laspada is a yes.
Laspada is a yes. Alderman Hopkins. Not present. Alderwoman Coleman. Alderwoman, oh, yes, okay. Alderwoman Coleman is a yes. Alderman O'Shea. Alderman O'Shea is a yes. Alderwoman Tabarez. Tabarez is a no. Alderwoman Cruz. Not present in chambers. Alderman Viegas. Alderman Viegas, you there? Okay. Voting is now closed.
There are thirty-two yays, fifteen nays. This motion passes. Alderman Mitchell on a motion to reconsider this vote.
Who to reconsider the vote?
All those in favor of the reconsideration of this vote signify by saying aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion fails. Chair recognizes Chairwoman Dow.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Item number eight D is an order authorizing the Corporation Council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Jackie Wilson versus John Burge et al. in the amount of twelve point seven million dollars. Alderman Conway of the Thirty-Fourth Ward recused himself from voting on this matter under Rule fourteen as he worked with Nick Tertinko at the State's Attorney's Office for four years in the Public Corruption slash Financial Crimes Unit. Though the incidents in this case preceded Alderman Conway's time at the office, he recused himself out of an abundance of caution. recused himself out of an abundance of caution. I move passage of this item by the same motion as applied to eight A with the exception of Aldermen Lopez, Scott, Hopkins, and Spazado, who all wish to be recorded no on this matter.
Very well, despite the division, hearing no other objections, so ordered.
Item number eight E is an order authorizing the corporation council to enter into and execute a settlement order in the case of Roberto Almo, Almo Devar versus Ronaldo, Ronaldo Rivera et al. in the amount of seventeen million dollars. I move passage of this item by the same motion as applied to eight A.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Items number nine and ten consist of orders of authorization for the payment of various small claims against the City of Chicago and the denial of payment of various small claims against the City of Chicago. If there are no objections, I will move that these items be placed in the passage in the omnibus.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Nick Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to go on record, I made a mistake, I know it can't be corrected. I told Madam Chair that, put me down for a no on item eight B, I meant to say C, so I just wanted to go on the record that I made a mistake, I do support item eight B. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The motion has been made for items nine and ten, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number eleven is a proposed order authorizing two charitable solicitation on the public way permit. One permit is for the Knights of Columbus citywide from September eighteenth twenty-twenty-five to September twenty-first twenty-twenty-five. Please note that the dates of solicitation were incorrectly read into the record during the finance committee meeting. The second permit is for the American Civil Liberties Union citywide from July thirty-first twenty-twenty-five to December thirty-first twenty-twenty-five. These two will be placed on file with clerk. The following item received a do not pass recommendation from the committee. Item number twelve is an ordinance introduced by Alderman Marty Quinn of the thirteenth ward, amending municipal code chapter two dash eight by adding a new section two dash eight dash oh three six, issuance of bonds and other indebtedness ordinance requirements. The President pro tem Samantha Nugent exercised her right under Rule thirty-six to serve as an ex officio member and participated in the vote. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Committee on Budget and Government Operations. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
President, I had to step out and use the bathroom during the first vote, I just wanted to be recorded as aye on the first vote for the override. If there are no objections.
Yeah, Alderman Beal, I cannot add you, the vote had been closed. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have precedents doing this in the past. If a person was in the back or in the bathroom, and as long as there's no objection from the body, to add a person to the roll.
Yeah, the precedent that we typically establish is the first most favorable roll call. In this instance, I'm not aware of any precedent that allows for a vote to be added after the closure of a vote. I think- Right, are there any objections from the body for Alderman Beal to be added as a, as a yes vote? For the vote to override the veto? Are there any objections from the body? All right, hearing no objections, we'll add, well, hearing no objections, we'll add Alderman Beal as a yes vote for the override veto measure. Very well, thank you. While we have the attention of everyone, I do want to just take a moment to recognize, well, just two things. One, there are a number of once summer Chicago interns that are in the room today or have been here throughout the day, many of them who have been interning for automatic offices. We thank them for their work and we hope that we continue to have a budget that allows for the continuation of our investments in youth employment. With that, if there are any interns, please stand, there's some of them are over there. Very well, thank you. I know it's been a long day for them, but this is great exercise. Chair recognizes Alderman Wagisback.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to add on to what you said there, I know one summer students and interns are here, and we also have MiCA challenge students here as well.
Oh, okay, great.
Which I know you've supported in the past.
Yeah, are there MiCA student, MiCA students, could you please stand? Our MiCA, let's give, okay, we have a couple, one that's still here. Well, how cool is that? You got your own personal standing ovation. As a former public school teacher and as the, as the teacher leader for MiCA challenge when I was at Westinghouse, thank you for your contribution. For, this was raised earlier, but now we have the family here, I believe. And we, I mentioned earlier that one of our officers, who's a part of the detail and is an officer, was an officer here at City Hall, Officer Pete Berkovich, and I understand that his family members are here, and Alderwoman Sam Nugent wishes to bring attention and to recognize this family. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Sam Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the temporary suspension of the rules to honor Sergeant Pete Berkovich.
If there are no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Today we honor our colleague Pete Berkovich. As a twenty-seven-year veteran of the Chicago Police Department, Sergeant Berkovich kept watch here at City Hall, ensuring the safety of everyone in here day in and day out. Sergeant Berkovich was a friend and a constituent in the thirty-ninth ward. I have the pleasure of knowing his lovely wife and beautiful children who are here with us today, Chi-Vet and the girls, and all of Pete's family and friends, please accept my sincere condolences and the condolences of the entire thirty-ninth ward. God bless you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Alderman Apolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too rise in support of this, to Pete's family. It was an absolutely beautiful ceremony. As we sent Pete off, I refer to him as Pretty Pete. Very tough last two months. My heart goes out to you. God bless you, you and your family. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Could we just offer up just a standing rise of honor for our fallen brother? I didn't see your hand, y'all, just relax, I missed it. Chair recognizes, okay, Alderman Moore, please, while we stand, give you a few moments.
No, I was just saying that, you know, we, and maybe we'll come back and do something else, but y'all don't know, realize the impact this man had on people's lives down here. Always kept a great smile, being positive, and treated everybody with respect. I mean, when we talk about, we, I know we, we're busy today, we got a lot going on, but when somebody like this have an impact on you and changed the city, I saw how he treat people when people are down here, no matter what color you were, no ethnicity, anything, he treated you with respect, and he always had a good joke for you, boy. And so, and so, family, thank you so much, and I'm hoping we'll probably do something even bigger or better because he deserves that, and he's a person that was loved by many of us down here. So thank you all, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for making this recognition.
Thank you. Alderman Nick Spazado.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'll be real quick, I just want to tell my vet and her daughters, Pete was a true blessing to me. I have a few more challenges than most of you do, but Pete was always there for me. Thank you.
Let's have a moment of silence for Officer Berkovich. Thank you very much. Thank you, Alderwoman Nugent. Now for the Committee on Budget and Government Operations, the Chair recognizes Chairman Irvin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council reporting for your Committee on Budget and Government Operations, which held a meeting on July fourteenth. The committee has a series of reports recommending passage of the following items. Item number one is a communication recommending a proposed ordinance concerning an annual appropriation ordinance year twenty-twenty-five amendment within Fund nine-two-five. I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item number two is a transfer of funds within the forty-seventh ward wage allowance and automatic expense account for year twenty-twenty-five. I make the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
That, before I conclude, I know that we will be a journey for the summer, a schedule on our budget process for twenty-twenty-six is our goal to get that out before the end of the month. Please keep in mind, we will have mid-year budget hearings beginning the second week in September. So we will be doing that, and we'll provide a schedule that will take us through the balance of the year so we can all get our ducks lined up in a row. Again, we will have aspirin, ibuprofen, sleeping bags, and other items available for those that need them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next committee is the Committee on Economic, Capital Technology and Development. The Chair recognizes Vice Chair Mosley.
Thank you, Mr. President, reporting for the Committee on Economic Capital and Technology Development. On Thursday, July tenth, twenty-twenty-five, the committee had held a meeting and recommended passage of the following items. Items one through five are a series of SSA appointments and reappointments. Items one through three are reappointments of Michael J. Parker, Omatola F. Akinbe-Yi, and Andrea Mintz-Gilriff as members of Special Service Area Number Thirty-One, Greater Ravenswood Commission. Items four and five are appointments of Connie Coleman and Christie Casey as members of Special Service Area Number Forty-Seven, the Forty-Seventh Street and Cottage Grove Commission, and Special Service Area Number Sixty-One, the Hyde Park Commission, respectively. I move for passage of these items by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you. Item six and seven on the report are tax incentives ordinance that were approved by the committee. Item number six on the report is a Class L tax incentive substitute ordinance for a property at nine hundred West Lake Street and two hundred North Peoria Street in the twenty-seventh ward. Item seven on the report is a Class Eight tax incentive ordinance at four thousand West Diversity Avenue in the thirty-first ward. I move for passage of these items by the first favorable roll call for the vote of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Our next committee is on Ethics, Government Oversight. The Chair recognizes Chairman Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of city council, reporting for your Committee on Ethics and Government Oversight, which held a committee meeting on Monday, July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five. The committee recommends passage of the following item. Item number one is substitute ordinance two zero two-five dash zero zero one five five eight-three, which is an amendment of section two dash fifty-six of the municipal code to modify powers and duties of the Office of Inspector General. The substitute was circulated and accepted by the committee and the item passed unanimously amongst all members present. I would like to briefly thank our corporation council, our inspector general, their departmental colleagues, and the Legislative Reference Bureau for their collaboration and dedication on this ordinance, and I move passage of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing, Chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Yes, I, I just would like to speak on this matter briefly, if that's okay, Mr. President?
Please, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I spoke on this last month, and I'm not going to beat a dead horse. The purpose of me speaking last week, and, and, and I also want to make a point, I'm not going to throw shade at anybody, that is not my objective here. My objective here is to try to bring to light what is right. And us as good stewards of our community, of our residents, it's important, it's imperative upon us to do what is right, even if it's unpopular. And I understand this vote is going to be heavily in favor, and I'll probably be the only person who actually votes against it, which is fine. And I'm sure the headline would read in the media that Alderman Gardner votes against transparency and accountability, and that's not the case. What I am trying to do, regardless of where you stand on your political spectrum, is stand up. Because as I said before, what could happen to one of us can happen to all of us. And all that I would like to see moving forward is proper guardrails for everyone. Right? What has happened to me, and not just include it in what just what I spoke about last month, I would not wish upon anybody. Any, I, I wouldn't wish this upon anybody in this room or anybody on the face of this planet. Because it was evil. I do want to speak and, and try to advocate for every single person in here, because I think it's very important for everybody to realize what we are doing. And it's, it's almost comparable for those of us who have kids, when you have a nineteen-year-old and they're driving the Ford, right? And they're doing a good job of driving the Ford, and they say, hey, Mom, hey, Dad, I, I'd really like to drive the Corvette in the garage, right? I'd really like to take that out and take that for a spin. And I think it's really important, right, for as parents, as good guardians, as good stewards, we say, you know what? Let's, let's, let's make sure that you know how to do the right things with what you have right now, until we have proper guardrails in place. What I am trying to say is that with great power comes great responsibility, and I just don't know if we have the proper guardrails in place right now to move forward with granting more privilege. And it's, it's ironic because it appears as if that I am fighting for the mayor's office or the law department, who I have politely disagreed. I, we've had our differences of opinion. But regardless of where we stand, as I said earlier, where we stand on the political spectrum, I will advocate for you. I will advocate for somebody, even if we have differences of opinion. And again, I know many of us cannot take this vote, we can't take, we can't take a no vote, but I at least want to take a minute to stand and just say, and I'd like to ensure that we have the proper oversight of all departments in our local government. And until we do so, I think it would be wise for us to press pause and, and ensure that that is in place before we move forward. Regardless of where you are on this vote, I respect you. I respect you as a colleague, I respect anybody who, who is here working for the City of Chicago, working for the betterment of our city. And I will continue to take a stand for what I believe is right, and I believe that voting against this is the right thing to do. Thank you for your time.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I implore my colleagues to vote aye on this because it is what is right. With great power does come great responsibility. We have so many, we have so many important responsibilities as elected officials, especially as Chicago alderpersons in a body, in a city, in a state, with a notorious history of elected officials convicted of wrongdoing, people abusing power, people abusing the public trust, graft, theft, stealing, there, there's a lot of things that some people do when they have power. Power can corrupt even the best of us. When I was granted this position by the voters of the forty-ninth ward, and even before then- and even before then, I knew that one of my responsibilities to honor my constituents, the city of Chicago, the great state of Illinois, and our country, would be to be above reproach. We've got to be the best, the example. We have an OIG, a Board of Ethics, a Department of Law, a lot of colleagues and people to help us know what the rules are, know how to follow them. We don't have the excuse of not knowing. And one of the standards that we have is, even if we haven't done something, we have to be beyond questioning of that. We have to be better. It's not enough to, to follow the rules. We cannot give the appearance of impropriety. We should not open ourselves up to that kind of issue because we have, even for those of us holding ourselves to this high, high standard, we still have problems. We still have people. We know we all deal with issues. Um, someone, you know, political opponents, people who are upset, people who are uninformed. There so many things that we struggle with in our office while trying to serve our constituents. And for the ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, and for the ninety percent of us that are holding ourselves to that extra standard, this ordinance is going to help us. We have a responsibility to earn and keep the trust of the constituents of the city of Chicago. And that means working hard every day to be above reproach. That means not trying to weaken efforts for government oversight. That means not trying to miss, um, to color these efforts as something other than what they are. That means not taking a personal issue and trying to undermine the entire ethics reform for the city of Chicago. We must move forward. We must be better. We must be stronger. And for those of us who have experienced these issues before, we know that we're here to help each other and support each other, and these are departments. And this ordinance, this is going to help the OIG make sure that we don't have false issues brought against us, that they have strong powers of investigation to make sure that the truth comes out. Construing this as anything other than that is a mistake. It's unwise. It's not responsible. It doesn't make sense. Urging this body to vote against this doesn't make any sense. Um, vote for this. Let us continue to strive to serve our great city, to respect the constituents who put us here and who trust and count on us to do our jobs. And if those standards get higher, we will rise to the challenge of those standards because that's what we were elected to do. I urge my colleagues to support this. Thank you, um, Alderman Martin, for bringing it forward, and thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognize, thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Wagisback.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, colleagues, I would urge you to vote in favor of this, uh, ethics ordinance. Um, this, this was prompted by, uh, a case, I believe, back in two thousand and seven with city contractors, and then, uh, kind of culminated in the Supreme Court ruling in Ferguson v. Patterson, um, about twelve, thirteen years ago. So this has been a long time coming, uh, for, I think, changes uh, to the Inspector General's office and the, and the duties that they have. So it's more based on, uh, some activities that took place, um, quite a while ago, almost two decades. Now, um, I also think that, you know, as we've tried over the years to increase the ability of the Inspector General to do things the right way, um, we saw changes back in twenty-twelve. Um, a lot of you who are here remember the, uh, Legislative Inspector General Office, which, uh, turned out to be uh, something that did not work. We were able to, uh, get rid of that and really make a more robust office of the Inspector General. Um, finally, Mr. President, I want to thank, uh, your Department of Law for really working hard. I think Alderman Martin, uh, was working up until the last minute as well with them to craft or amend the language to still make it strong for what the Inspector General needs, but also to make sure that the Department of Law is at the table and, uh, protecting the rights and making sure that city employees have the legal representation that they need, uh, the attorney-client privilege that they need, um, as they move forward on these cases. So I, I think a lot of credit goes to uh, Mary Richardson Lowry and her staff for making sure that what the final product was, was something that DOL, the Inspector General, and the City Council can work with and, and pass here today. So thank you very much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Sigcho Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I do want to thank both, um, Corporation Council and, uh, Alderman Martin on reaching an agreement in the best interest of the city of Chicago. Um, ethics reform in our council is, is long overdue and desperately needed. But it's important that we do it always with the best interest of our constituents, the best interest of the city, and not with ulterior motives, not to weaponize investigations for political gain. And that is something that we all must agree, even is playing out at the federal level. When files are being withheld, what evidence are being withheld, to hide the truth and hide the facts. So I do not want to dismiss the issues that were in front of us. And I'm glad that we are moving with expediency, but also being responsible with the needs and priorities of our city. We see how investigations are taking place at the same time with urgent matters are also taking place. We saw how the Givroom investigation took precedent as our own communities were terrorized by a federal government that did not, does not believe in the Constitution. I am not going to stand for that, but I'm glad, and I'm glad that the city of Chicago is moving in the right direction, putting forward a compromise that does justice to what the goals and aspirations that we have in our council, but also in the city of Chicago, where is much expected of city council, which is due process and upholding the values and principles and our constitution. So with that, I want to thank, again, Corporation Council and Alderman Martin to reach an agreement. That is what we should be doing as legislators. And I think this forward is a compromise that moves us forward, and a my commitment to ethics reform always in the best interest of the city of Chicago and our best, and our special interest groups. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chairman has placed on the floor a motion to approve this item with the most favorable roll call that was taken in the Finance Committee and the associated, uh, motion to reconsider, and it's, it's failure, the associated motion to reconsider. If there are no other comments, unless the Chairman wishes to close, very well, hearing, and just for clarity, Alderman Gardner, do you wish to be recorded as a no? Okay, the Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
You got jokes on, alright. Um, let me, let's, uh, I think we have to separate the policy from the person. Uh, there has been some challenges and allegations around an individual. However, uh, the policy that's set forth, um, that has been negotiated between the, uh, Chairpeople, Inspector, and, uh, our Corporation Council is, uh, is meaningful. Uh, whatever has transpired, uh, that needs to be dealt with and dealt with in the way it needs to be dealt with, and I think this ordinance creates the path for that to happen. So let's not marry the policy and the person, but let's separate them and let them be, be dealt with appropriately so that we can deliver on the reforms that are necessary while at the same time restoring, uh, and generating additional integrity to the process.
Very well. The motion is still on the floor. Alderman Gardner wishes to be recorded as a no, seeing no other hands. Hearing no other objections, so ordered. Chairman Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee also held a subject matter hearing on updates to the draft policy on ineligible for rehire by the Department of Human Resources. No votes were taken. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. For the Committee on Health and Human Relations, the Chair recognizes Chairperson Rodriguez Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President, reporting for the Committee on Health and Human Relations, which met on May twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, at ten AM. Item number one in the agenda was A twenty twenty-five zero zero one six six seven zero, the mayoral appointment of Dr. Anu Shaq to the Board of Health, which received a due pass recommendation from the Committee. Mr. President, I move passage of this item by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The Committee also held a subject matter hearing with the Chicago Department of Public Health regarding the strategic plan and summer strategy, where we learned about the department's efforts to control exposure to the West Nile virus within Chicago, food safety inspections, opioid overdose prevention strategies, and gun violence intervention strategies. I'm happy to connect any of my colleagues with the resources shared, and I highly encourage everyone to watch the recording of the hearing. No vote was taken on this matter. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The Committee on Housing and Real Estate, Chair recognizes Chair Sigcho Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Housing and Real Estate, which held a meeting on July ninth, twenty twenty-five. The Committee has a series of reports recommending passage of seven appointments and fourteen ordinances. This included right-of-entry agreement, three public way matters, and various land sales. Item one through seven are for appointments to the Board of Directors for the Residential Investment Corporation. They are Christine Horn, Don Villar, William W. Towns, Edith Tobar, with Doling Hatton Butler, Daniel Hertz, and Juanita Garcia. I move passes of these seven items by the first most favorable roll call vote on the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The next item is from the Department of Fleet and Facility Management. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eighteen one seven one, Second Amendment to Right-Entry Use Agreement with Lincoln Parks Zoological Society in the forty-second ward, I move passes of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item ten on the summary report is from the Department of Housing, a substitute ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eighteen two-two-two, First Amendment to City Lots of Working Families Program for City-Owned Bacon Land to developers for construction of affordable single-family homes for two flat buildings, including changes to lot size, lot value thresholds, city hiring requirements, and other participatory or qualifying amendments. I move passes of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item eleven through thirteen are from the Department of Transportation for projects within the forty-fifth, tenth, and twenty-second and twenty-third wards. The ordinance numbers are ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eighteen to twenty, zero twenty twenty-five, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eighteen one ninety, and the last one, which was a substitute, ordinance, uh, the substitute ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eighteen eighteen ninety-four. I move passes of, of these three items by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The remaining items are for the Department of Planning and Development. Item fourteen, substitute twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eighteen two five zero, sale of vacant city-owned properties at thirty, thirty-six thirty-five dash thirty-six thirty-seven West Douglas Boulevard, fifteen oh one, um, eighteen fifty-nine, and nineteen hundred South Springfield Avenue, fifteen twenty-four, and sixteen thirteen South Avers Avenue, and fourteen oh, oh-two South Independence Boulevard, two redevelopment agreement with Missing Middle Chicago LLC under the Chai Block Builder Platform for construction of eight residential buildings in the twenty-fourth ward, I move passes of this item by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The next two items are, uh, uh, pre-Chai Block Builder Sales of Vacant City-Owned Properties, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eighteen two five four in the twenty-ninth ward, and ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eighteen two five one in the twenty-seventh ward, I move passes of these items by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Item seventeen, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eighteen two four five, and item eighteen, twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eighteen two thirty-five, are sale of vacant city-owned property under the side yard and urban agriculture programs on Chai Block Builder Platform in the twenty-eighth and twenty-first wards, I move passes of these two items by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
The remaining items are grouped together for convenience. Items nineteen through twenty-two are for the market rate sale of city-owned land through the Chai Block Builder Platform in the twenty-third, twenty-seventh, fifth, and third wards, I move passes of these items by the same motion.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Um, finally, the Committee held a subject matter hearing led by Chairwoman Rodriguez Sanchez on impacts of the algorithm price fixing on housing availability and affordability. There were no votes taken on this matter. Uh, Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights, the Chair recognizes Chair Vasquez.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, and members of the City Council, reporting for the Committee on Immigrant and Refugee Rights, which held a committee meeting on July first, uh, two thousand twenty-five. There were two items on the agenda, the first being, uh, order two zero two-five dash zero zero one seven eight one zero, an order requiring data turnover to City Council from Chic- uh, Chicago Police Department, Office of Emergency Management and Communications, and the Mayor's Office regarding U.S. Department of Homeland Security presence at twenty-two forty-five South Michigan Avenue and vicinity locations on June fourth, twenty twenty-five at intensive supervision appearance program, uh, B, uh, Business Inc. building, which then passed as a substitute order. Uh, the second was a subject matter hearing on the activities of the Chair of the Committee, which I held in order to make more time to hear the above-passed order. Uh, I move passage of S O R two zero two-five dash zero zero one seven eight one zero by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on, uh, Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Chair recognizes Alderman Raymond Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman Napolitano, Napolitano and I move to defer and publish this item.
Very well. Alderman Napolitano, can you confirm your agreement to defer and publish this item? Alderman Napolitano, can you confirm your agreement?
I agree. I affirm.
All right, this item will be deferred.
Uh, yeah, uh, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the Committee on License and Consumer Protection, the Chair recognizes Chair Silverstein.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council. I'm reporting for the Committee on License and Consumer Protection. We held a meeting on July eighth, twenty twenty-five, and the following items were passed by the Committee. Seven ordinances regarding liquor moratoriums in the fifteenth, twenty-seventh, thirty-fourth, thirty-seventh, fortieth, forty-second, and forty-third wards. Committee has recommended passage of each of these items. Oh two zero two-five dash oh oh one eight oh nine seven, and others ending oh oh one seven six three seven, oh oh one seven eight two one, oh oh one seven eight three three, oh oh one eight one six six, oh oh one eight oh two four, and oh oh one eight oh five eight. Mr. President, I move that the City Council concur in the recommendations of the License Committee by the same roll call as item number one of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, the Chair recognizes Chair, right? For the Committee on Police and Fire, we'll go to Committee on Police and Fire. The Chair recognizes Chair Talia Faro.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting to, uh, for your Committee on Police and Fire, for which meeting was held on July tenth, twenty twenty-five. The Committee recommends the passage of the following items. Item number one was the reappointment of Annette Guzman as member of the Chair, as member and Chair of the Chicago Emergency Telephone System Board. Item two, three, and four was the appointment of Walter Schroeder, Dr. Shanitra Washington, and Michael DeVita as members of the Chicago Emergency Telephone System Board. If there is no objection, you, uh, Mr. President, I move the passage of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote in the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Item number five was the Amendment of Municipal Code, Section Three dash six four dash one hundred, regarding the composition of the city's Emergency Telephone System Board. I move the passage of this item by the same motion, if there are no objections.
Hearing none, so ordered.
And the last item, item number six, was the appointment of Louis Bermudas as member of District Council for the seventeenth district. Move the passage of this item by the same most favorable vote in the Committee on Finance.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the Committee on Public Safety, the Chair recognizes Chair Hopkins.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, reporting for your Committee on Public Safety, which held a meeting on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, your Committee adopted a motion discharging itself of further consideration of proposed ordinance one eight one six eight for purposes of a re-referral of the matter to a joint committee of the Committee on Police and Fire and the Committee on Refugee Rights. The Committee also recommends- The committee also recommends passage of the following item, proposed ordinance twenty twenty five one eight one five four, amendment of the municipal code creating new section eight four seventy-eight regarding assault against public officials. If no one wishes to speak, I move passage of these two items by the first favorable roll call of the Committee on Finance and associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Seeing no hands and hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes my report.
Very well. For the Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, and Recreation, the Chair recognizes Chair Spazaro.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, reporting for Committee on Special Events, Cultural Affairs, Recreation, also known as the Happy Committee, which held a meeting on July eighth, two thousand twenty twenty-five. Committee recommends passes of the following item. Oh two zero two five dash zero zero one eight one five eight, expenditure of open space impact fee funds for garden development at two six one six North Albany Avenue. I move passes of this item by the first favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you. For the Committee on Transportation and Public Way, the Chair recognizes Chair Mitchell.
Mr. President and members of the City Council, reporting for your Committee on Transportation and Public Way, which held a meeting on July ninth, two thousand twenty-five. The following items passed by the majority of the members present. Page two includes item Resolution two zero two five zero zero one eight seven six, a call on the Regional Transportation Authority to create a potty program to provide safe transportation to minors with pickup and drop-off services at public events within the twenty-ninth ward. Pages three and four include twelve ordinances for miscellaneous items introduced by the local aldermen from wards one, six, fifteen, twenty-four, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-six, thirty-eight, forty-two, and forty-six. If there is no objection, I move passes of these items by the first most favorable roll call vote of the Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Mr. President, this concludes my report.
Thank you. For the Committee on Workforce and Development, the Chair recognizes Chair Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting for the Committee on Workforce Development, which held a meeting on July seventh and recessed until July fifteenth. There were two items on the agenda, R two zero two five dash zero zero one eight zero one three, an expression of support for the Paul Simon Job Corps Center. I want to thank everyone who came to the committee to hear from the young people that testified to the importance of the Job Corps program here and nationally at a time when young people are struggling to find fulfilling careers. Programs like Job Corps should be strengthened, not eliminated. Thank you to all for standing up for our young people on this resolution, and I'm proud to say this item passed by unanimous vote of all members present. The second item on the agenda, oh two zero two five dash zero zero one eight seven two eight, a direct introduction authorizing the execution of the collective bargaining agreement with the Public Safety Employees Union, Unit Two. The ordinance was approved by a voice vote of all members present. I move the first most favorable vote on the Committee on Finance and the associated motion to reconsider be applied to both of these items.
Very well. Seeing no hands and hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And now for our Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, the Chair recognizes Vice Chair Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President, reporting for the Committee on Pedestrian and Traffic Safety, which meeting was held on Thursday, June twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, and Tuesday, July eighth, two thousand twenty-five. On June twenty-six, the committee held a hearing pursuant to R two zero two five dash zero zero one six seven five two, call for hearing on use of police traffic stops in Chicago, impacts on traffic safety, and reform efforts undertaken by Police Department and Community Commission for Public Safety and Accountability, sponsored by Alderman Yancey. No votes were taken at this meeting. On Tuesday, July eighth, there were one hundred and ninety routine traffic items before the committee, all which passed. If there are no objections, I move the passage of these routine traffic items by the most favorable roll call vote from Committee on Finance and the associated unsuccessful motion to reconsider the vote.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Chair recognizes our next committee, our final committee, is Committee on Zoning Landmarks and Building Standards. Chair recognizes Chairman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the City Council. For the last time, I'm presenting a series of reports for your Committee on Zoning Landmarks Which held a meeting on July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. The final, the following items were passed by a majority of the members present in our group for convenience. Page one contains document number S zero two zero, no, S O, I'm sorry, S O two zero two four dash zero 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 eight nine one eight, the amendment of Municipal Code Title Two and Seventeen regarding conversions, units, and coach houses. Alderman Bennett Larson has something to say.
Okay, so for this, there's been a group for convenience, but this one item were taken up by itself. Chair recognizes Vice Chair of the Committee, Bennett Lawson. Chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Myself and Alderman Mitchell are going to confirm and publish this item.
Okay, Alderman Mitchell, can you confirm? All right, so item number S O twenty twenty four zero 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 eighty-nine eighteen will be deferred. Very well. The Chair recognizes Chairman Burnett.
So I should proceed on?
Please.
So on page one also contains document number oh two zero two five dash zero zero one five five seven seven, that allows for a minimum of street automobile parking ratio reductions up to one hundred percent for construction of parking structures near Chicago Transit Authority or Metro Rail or bus lines. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Page one also contains document number oh two zero two five zero zero one eight one five six, amending the predominance of the block six oh six district in the thirty-first and thirty-six wards. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Page one also contains document number oh two zero two five dash zero zero one eight one eight nine, authorizing the zoning administrator to approve exemptions from minimum lot areas for Chicago landmark buildings. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Page one also contains document number oh two five, two zero, I'm sorry, document number oh two zero two five dash zero zero one eight zero six three, a journal corrections for zoning reclassification map number five dash G, at twenty-two twenty-five North Dayton Street. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Page one also contains and adopt a street landmark grant funding agreement with Greenstone United Methodist Church for a preservation project located at one one two one one South St. Lawrence Avenue. I move passage of this item by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Moving on, pages two through nine, contains various map amendments in the third, eighth, eleventh, seventeenth, nineteenth, twenty-first, twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, thirty-first, thirty-second, forty-third, forty-four, forty-seven, forty-eighth, and fiftyth wards. Before I move passage on these items, I would like to recognize Alderman Sixo Lopez.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Sixo Lopez. Which item do you wish to speak to?
Thank you, Mr. President. Found on page five, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 twenty-seven ninety-five for an amendment map located at seven hundred West Chicago. Alderman Mike Rodriguez and I would like to defer and publish this item.
Alderman Mike Rodriguez, can you confirm your wish? I said yes? So could you repeat that item again for the clerk?
Is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 twenty-seven ninety-five.
Very well.
Twenty-seven ninety-five.
Very well, that item will be deferred.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Vasquez. All right, please continue, Mr. Chair.
I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
With the exception of the item that has been moved to be deferred, hearing no other objections, so ordered.
Lastly, page ten contains various large signs over one hundred square feet in area twenty-four, in area twenty-four feet above grade in wards eleven, twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-five, thirty-six, forty-one, forty-two, forty-five, and forty-nine. I move passage of these items by the same motion if there is no objection.
Hearing none, so ordered.
Mr. President, that concludes my last report. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Irvin.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. In light of our colleagues' last meeting, I think it will be befitting for us to give him some words of encouragement, some words of wisdom, some words of why. But what I will say this, I first, first met Alderman Burnett in the Young Democrats back in the late, late nineties. Walt has been involved in this business for over forty years. He's been somebody that has served. In order to lead, you must serve. When I first came here, I was telling, someone told me something that was very interesting. They said, "The ballot box, the pine box, or the jury box is how people leave this place." And today, we've got someone who has done it right, who has done it well, and has done something that we don't find in the black community, is willing to pass something on to the next generation, so that we as a community can continue to thrive. It has been a pleasure to sit here. I've learned so much, and one of your best sayings, I will say, is you said to, "Don't get mad, get ahead." It's something that he always talked about, and someone that was always willing to try to reach a solution that everybody could live with. So I wish you the best in your next endeavor, whatever that may be. I am hopeful that your replacement will be as sharp as you, hope you look taller than you, but as sharp as you. And, and again, I will continue to work and support the west side of Chicago, as you have demonstrated during your thirty years with us in this body. Thank you, God bless you, and may God continue to be with you.
Alderman, Alderman Irvin, Alderman Irvin, on your motion to suspend the rules.
Yeah, that.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules so that we can provide some accolade for our long-serving Alderman Burnett. If there are no objections, hearing none, so ordered, the rules will be suspended. The Chair recognizes Alderman Rodriguez.
Y'all didn't know this, but Alder Burnett is also an honorary member of the Latino Caucus. He's Dominican, right?
That's right. El que no vive para servir, no sirve para vivir. He who does not live to serve, does not serve to live. A quote by Malano Zapata. And when I think about that quote, I think about Walter Burnett. I think about someone who's lived to serve, who comes from the communities that are so desperately in need, who has shown the way to leadership, and has looked behind and raised others up. I've seen it myself. I've felt it myself. I've received that love and support, that guidance throughout the years in this hall and in many other halls. And I just want to say, every step of the way, Alderman, every step of the way, you've been a true leader. You've been a true bridge builder, a person who looks at other communities and thinks about how we can serve together and come together, not just for the benefit of one community, but for all communities. And that leadership, my friend, will stay here in this council. That spirit will stay, your spirit will stay, and I thank you so very much for your countless years of service to not only your community, but to our great city of Chicago. I say thank you so much for giving all of yourself to our city and to your communities. Muchas muchas gracias, hermano.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Spazaro.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you so much, Alderman Irvin, for suspending the rules. I knew this love fest would happen, I just wasn't so sure when we were going to do it. So, well-deserved, Walter. You were a pleasure to work with. You're a true gentleman, a generous individual, an inspiration to many, especially to me. You're the one guy I believe in this council that could get along with everybody, so this says something. This is a tough council to get along with each other, so it's a very divided council. But you're the one guy that could talk to everybody and build bridges, just, you're just a true friend. I'm going to miss you. That applause was not happy you're leaving, it was just thanking you for everything. So you're just a wonderful individual, appreciate everything you've done. Feel free to stop at the office any day for some treats. You will certainly be missed. Thank you so much for everything. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Silverstein.
Thank you so much. Walter, I just want to wish you a lot of really good luck. We've been working together for quite some time now, and you are a true leader, and I just want to thank you for everything that you've done. I think a lot of us know that you're also multilingual, so I'm going to say to you, ta da ra ba, la hitra ots, and zaga zant. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in sadness to see my brother leave. We've been working together for the last, we've been working together...
Excuse me, can we have, can we have quiet in the chambers, please? Thank you.
For the last forty-plus years together, in this grind, and so I couldn't be prouder of him as a YD, as he was the first one to make it to an elected position, and as we were young people, growing up and working behind the scenes and supporting other politicians, he became the first one to get elected and become one of the aldermen here. And so it was really a cool thing that somebody from our universe got here. And so he became the example of what you should be and how hard you should work. But it's your kindness, Walter. It's your forgiving spirit. It's your never-giving-up spirit. It's your working-hard spirit that I admire most about you. Your kindness and your thoughtfulness will never be forgotten. It's not been a day that I've put my ear to a phone and called you and you haven't tried to help me and help my community. So today, I stand here grateful, knowing that I had the opportunity to work with you. You're going, moving on to another life, so I look forward to seeing you in that next part of that life, but I love what you've done while you've been here. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Martin. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Harris.
At some point, could we suspend the rules to allow the clerk to speak to after Alderman Martin? At some point, could we suspend the rules to allow the clerk to speak to after Alderman Martin?
You got it.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I want to share a few things. One is emphasizing the way in which you've been the connective tissue for this body, the glue that holds us together in ways that probably no single person in this body fully appreciates. Because you talk with this person, you talk with that person, you smooth this over, all in service of the jobs that we were hired to do, which is serving our communities. Uh, at the end of the day, fixing problems and not being problems in the process. Um, we're gonna miss that. I hope we don't fall apart after you leave, but we'll, we'll figure it out. Um, I also want to just underscore how much you've been an inspiration to me and others in terms of how you've built up your community, the ways in which you've made space for thousands of people in your community, no matter their background, no matter how much money they've made, what they look like, where they work, if they work at all. Um, just to really sit on that and think, some of us, you know, we fight for, uh, building here, a few dozen homes there. You've reconstituted an entire community, uh, in ways that are profound and we're probably not going to see again in our lifetimes. Um, and to do it in a way where, uh, you've engendered so much support and goodwill, um, I, I think it's just a true testament to your service. Um, and you've done all of that while juggling the responsibilities that all of us juggle, and we, we kind of commiserate around. We don't talk about too much publicly, but it's hard to do this job well and to be a parent. It's hard to do this job well and to be a spouse, um, knowing that you're always gonna have to make challenging decisions of, can I be here for my, my spouse, my child as they're celebrating milestones? Can I be here for my community and giving them the needs, uh, addressing their needs? And you can't be both of those as much as you want. Um, but the ways in which you found an opportunity to make that work, uh, is inspirational. And then just lastly on that point, I think you and I had shared a moment earlier this week where we were talking about what comes next for you and, and your family and many things. And I just tried to remark simply, you've done good work, keeping it as simple as that. And, you know, kind of, you had your own response to sit and reflect on that. And for many of us, as we ultimately will leave this body, um, you know, we'll think about, I'm, I'm proud of doing this, proud of doing that. Maybe a few minutes, maybe for lucky an hour where we can really think through all the things we're proud of. For you, it's probably days, if not weeks, what you've given your community, this body, this entire city. Um, I don't think that we can really put into words how thankful we are individually and collectively. So, thank you, and please continue to find opportunities to serve and to guide us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Nicole Lee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I met Walter Burnett the first time, uh, in two thousand and four. I was working at a little bank that had just opened, uh, Adams and Ogden, uh, and, uh, the Alderman came in. He was much like he is today. Um, super happy, um, really engaging, really welcoming, um, and just all around a good guy. Uh, I, I think there's so many things that we're gonna miss about you being on this council, Walter. I know I've only been on here a short time, uh, but yours was one of the, the conversations I remembered the most when I made those forty-nine phone calls over the weekend before I was confirmed, like, before this council. Um, and you gave me a piece of advice at the end of our conversation, after you showed me how good your Chinese was, of course. Um, your Chinese, your Tagala, your Korean, all of it. Um, but you, you said to me, you know, you know, I eat an elephant, right? Uh, and I said, "No idea." He said, "One bite at a time." Uh, and I take that advice, uh, to heart every single day because this job can be completely overwhelming. Um, the kind of responsibility that each and every one of us hold within our communities, uh, the care with which we take, uh, our constituents. And then the decisions we are, uh, we're sort of shouldered with here as the council for the entire city. Um, you're definitely someone that many of us look up to, Walter. Um, you know, I just want to thank you for your service, your incredible service, and, um, all that you brought to this council in terms of just being the guy, right? Walter walks into the room, everybody just kind of calms down for a minute. I don't know, you know, I, I think you have that, uh, effect, at least from my observation. Uh, and you will be sorely missed. So thank you for all your years of service. Thank you for absolutely the indelible mark that you've left on this city, um, in your ward on, on the west side, the Fulton Market, uh, as well as Randolph Street. I mean, I think about what that looked like when I was in high school, um, and people that were still working the corners versus what that looks like today. Um, and, and that is, has been under your stewardship. So bravo to you, good luck to you, um, and to your wife for all, for all that you've had to sacrifice as well. I, it seems to me there's gonna be a lot more, like, house dancing parties for you in your future, um, and, and a lot more time to just enjoy life, uh, and well-deserved. So thank you, Walter. Wish you well.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman David Moore, who did not have those shades on two minutes ago. See what you don't start it?
It's just for my brother here. Uh, first of all, let me say, you, you make people who come out from public housing like myself very proud. And, um, what you've done, it's been, um, been able so somebody can see what they can be. And so that I appreciate. Um, we both come out of, um, organization politics, and, and we learned out of that. Some of us, um, learned and got deeper into it, and some of us took another avenue with it. Uh, what do you mean, David? Uh, I always say, um, there's politics, politicians and servants. I consider myself a servant. I consider you a servant and a politician. Uh, and I've seen that. You cannot argue for thirty years. Um, you cannot argue with it. And what you've been able to do is, um, not only serve your community, although sometimes our politics didn't align. What did align is what you were trying to accomplish, uh, for people, um, that look like us. And that I never argued with, and that, because you were always doing that. On many occasions, I hope we all could have stuck, uh, stuck together on issues. Uh, but sometimes people have to go out there on their, on their own. Me, once I see somebody drowning, or I see several people drowning, I'm trying to save everybody. But sometimes you only can save everybody if everybody is willing to save everybody. What you've done, you said, "David, I can't let everybody drown." You know, uh, I mean, I can't let everybody drown. I have to save at least one or two. And that's what you've done. And, and, and that I, I appreciate about you. Um, you are someone that, don't take anything so hard and personally. We can argue, we can disagree, and then tomorrow, we laughing and we shaking hands. Too many people take things so personal. You gotta understand, you represent the ward that you have, and for thirty years, they've sent you back. They could have not done that at any time, but they did it because you were the right person for the job. You were also willing, without even people asking. And this is what I appreciate again, walking up, "How can you add value?" Or maybe you should do this. You can take, people can take your advice or not, right? But you came up and you said, "This is how I can add value. This is what I think you should do." A lot of people, as the old church person said, "Let your slip hang." They'll just let you out there and leave you out there. And you did not do that for many of us, and for that, I appreciate it. I think one of the best things you ever probably done in life was marry this woman right here. She is a sweetheart. Even if I'm upset with you, if she call, I gotta be nice with you. She is, she is just that wonderful and has a great heart. But also, you are a deacon. You are a man of God. None of us are perfect, okay? Even disciples that worked with Christ wasn't not perfect. But I know where your heart lies, and that's what I look at, a person's heart. And your heart was in this, man, and your heart is in serving our people. So, um, I'm not gonna say I miss, I miss you. I'm gonna miss you, uh, because I'm hoping to continue to work with you somewhere. I'll miss you in this body. But I'm hoping that, um, you'll be serving in another capacity where we who live in public housing can have your voice and have your leadership. And so with that, I, I wish you well in your next endeavors, and, um, I appreciate being able to call Walter Burnett friend.
Thank you, Alderman. The chair recognizes Alder Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, you know, I have the privilege of having a great relationship with three Aldermen that have sat in this seat, Luis Gutierrez, Pilio Casio, and Roberto Maldonado. And as I was transitioning to become the Alder Person, I wanted to understand sort of the historical memory and the muscle memory of this seat. And I met with all three individuals, and all three had the same thing to say about Walter. You may not always agree with Walter, but Walter is always going to be a friend. Then I met with my greatest mentor, Jose Lopez, who's the executive director of the Puerto Rican Cultural Center, the reason I became politicized and, you know, even considered electoral politics. And I asked Jose about his opinions about folks that were sitting in the chambers. And he says, "West Side, Humble Park Alderman Burnett, he's a friend." And when I first got elected, you were one of the first people to greet me. Actually, you were the, one of the first people to call me after I won my election, uh, to tell me that it wasn't going to be easy, but to take it one day at a time. And then about a year ago, uh, my staff called me. They said, "There's this disgruntled man in the lobby, and he is making a show. He is turning it up in here." And so I crossed the street, and in the lobby is Walter Burnett. Came in disguised as a disgruntled constituent, wanted to see how my cons, my employees would serve him. Uh, and so I take him outside. He made them really nervous. I need to give him a break. Uh, and, you know, he rode his bike to the twenty-sixth ward just to check on me. Just to ask, "How are you doing? How's your staff? How's your office set up? Do you need anything? I know it's hard. It's particularly hard when you're in your first term, but I'm here." And then he asked me where to go get coconut oatmeal. I had to direct him across the street. But the one thing that, that I'm grateful for, uh, is to have someone that has shown what true solidarity looks like in this chamber. I think that obviously we all have sort of different political perspectives, and we all bring so much of ourselves and our lived experiences into the seat, and we're not always going to agree. Uh, nor are we always going to be cordial or happy with one another because unfortunately, there's so much high stakes in this particular field that it causes a lot of tension. What I'm grateful for is that Walter has always helped simmer down the room. When tensions are high, when people are upset, uh, he reminds us why we're here. He reminds us what we are fighting for. He reminds us that there is a middle that we can achieve. Uh, and that if we lighten up just a little bit and have a few conversations, we can get there. Uh, in the short period of time that I've had the privilege of serving with you, Walter, I've learned so much. Uh, but the one thing that I know to be true is the twenty-sixth ward is also better because of you, because you have always been a friend to the people that have sat in this seat, who wanted to build affordable housing, who want to fight displacement, that wanted to ensure that working families can stay in Humboldt Park and many other communities. And the twenty-seventh ward is a beautiful place. You've spent the last thirty years putting all of yourself into housing people, into funding organizations that fight for public safety, into being a friend with everyday neighbors. It's not talked about a lot today the way it was when you first ran for office, but your lived experience, your ability to come into elected office as a young black man with an encounter in the justice system gave someone like me hope to be able to do the same. And you, and your story, and your ability to be here for so long after an experience like yours as a young person, is gonna give a lot of young people hope that they can have experiences, and maybe they can make mistakes, but those things don't have to define them, and that they could be agents of change in their community, they could be leaders of this city, and they can transform this world. You are a living example of that. And I'm always going to take the privilege to telling the story of Walter Burnett to many young people, particularly young black men who need you as an example. And so I'm, I'm excited for you and with deep sadness, uh, to see, you know, I have the privilege of having you as my seatmate across the aisle, so I hope I, I get a great roommate, the way you've been a great roommate, uh, to me. I, I wish you the best of luck. And, and to Mrs. Burnett, thank you for tolerating us and sacrificing time. Uh, it takes genuine radical and authentic love to be a partner of someone who's in elected office for this long. Uh, he's able to walk in and be as strong and confident and consistent, uh, because you are consistent and strong and confident at home. And so thank you for all that you have given us uh, in this, in this chamber and in the city of Chicago. Congratulations, brother.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Walter, um, I jotted down a few thoughts of, that came to my mind when I think of you. Um, the first is you're an honest broker. If you give someone your word, you take that to the bank. I appreciate that, Walter. The second is your legacy. You're as accomplished as any Alder that ever walked through this chamber. But with that legacy, you've also walked with everybody in your life, and that's something to be proud of. The third thing I wrote down is you're, you're down-to-earth, man. For all your accomplishments, you've never changed. You've always been Walter. And, and the last thing I wrote down, and, and this is probably an inadequate list to describe who you are, but you're a great Chicagoan with a great Chicago story. I'm a better person for knowing you, and I consider you a friend, Walter. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Walter, I want to congratulate you on an amazing career. Um, as Alderman Quinn just said, I, I especially appreciate you because you embody Chicago. You are undeniably Chicago, and unfortunately, that is a dying breed, even down here. Um, there's a saying that I'm a, I'm a product of my environment. And maybe at some point in your life, that may have been true. But more importantly, now your environment is a product of you and the work that you have done. Look at the west side. Look at the west loop. I mean, what amazing changes that you have brought there. Look at all the work that you have done for the black community, jobs, education, opportunities. And as you know full well, opportunities sometimes are the difference between making it in this world and not making it. Are you perfect? Absolutely not. No, that's probably why I like you. That's probably why a lot of us like you. Um, I appreciate your imperfections. I appreciate you taking ownership of your past mistakes and teaching the next generation not to make the same. I see the kids, the young men that you bring in here, and that you mentor, and you give them opportunities, you give them jobs. Um, and I'm not the only one who sees that. What you have given back to the city is a priceless commodity, and it can probably never be repaid, and you still continue to do it. And I'm sure you're, you're going to do it in retirement. Um, so from the bottom of my heart, uh, in the northwest side of Chicago, we want to thank you for your service to this city and to the next generation that is coming up behind you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Haddon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, uh, Walter, um, the first time I got to meet, uh, Alderman Burnett was when I was working with the participatory budgeting project, and we got to come to, uh, West Humboldt Park and work with blocks together and, um, do this fantastic community engagement process, right? With two million dollars in TIF funds. And it was a, a wonderful intro to West Humboldt Park. And, um, as someone who was only a couple of years into getting to work with, um, Aldermen and, and electeds in Chicago, you know, we have all kinds of perceptions, uh, as regular people outside of city council about which Alder does what, and Alder people are intimidating and mysterious. You were certainly one of them. You're always very stylish, too, right? So that, you know, you walk around, you look like you own the space, you very much embody, uh, the, the vibes. Uh, our vice mayor, dean of city council, um, uh, right? Yeah, he does, he does. Um, but, um, I just remember how I got to know you and what your leadership style was and how you served your community through the way that you worked with that organization and through that process. I've had the opportunity to get to know several of you, uh, my colleagues in that way. But, you know, everything everyone is saying about you is true. Um, you've been such a mentor and you're so open. You're always open. Open door policy. You have a lot of wisdom and that's really clear. And you're very generous in what you share. Both in paying for lunch, for Black Caucus lunches all the time. Thank you. But, but really generous with all of that wisdom, that experience, um, the people that you've touched around the city. It's just immeasurable. So, uh, it's a, it's been an honor to serve with you. I'm excited for whatever you're doing next. And, uh, again, a happy belated 30th anniversary, um, to the two of you. But I can't believe you're leaving. But I'm really glad that you were here. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alder Sam Nugent.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I think about Walter, how many languages have you attempted to speak in this chamber? So here's what I was able to come up with. Hebrew, Spanish, Chinese, Italian, every time we see each other, Korean, uh, Tagala. And I think I heard an Irish brogue out of you a couple of times during the height, the holy month. And this is what I love about Walter. He finds connectivity with everyone, with all our diverse communities and our faith groups. And, and he does it in his own way. He does it really authentically. And I think that's why everybody's gotten up and said how much they love you. You just, you find a way to find connectivity with all of us and with your community. And that's just so important. And I think we just have to take a second and think about what you've accomplished, what you've done. We're all talking about Fulton Market and the West Loop and the West Side. And it's awesome. It's amazing. But what about housing? And I think, um, I haven't heard folks mention the reentry work that you've done, which is so meaningful and so important. And, um, I know how much of yourself you put into that and the city's, city's a better place for that. So thank you, my friend, for being a great public servant and a, and a great friend. Best wishes to you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Beal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Walter, my man, my man. First of all, I'm glad to see you finally brought your daughter to sit over in the, in the booth. Cause everybody knows if, if you have a spouse, you're gonna be in trouble when Walter meets your spouse. Cause the first time he met my wife, he said, "Oh, Alderman, I see you brought your daughter." And from that point on, from that point on, my wife says, "Why can't you be more like Walter?" Walter kept me in trouble. But the fact that he had a knack for connecting with everybody, and that's what everybody is sitting here saying. Walter, there is nobody that could have developed your ward like you have in 30 years. And you should really be proud of the work that you have done. Because you have been able to bring people together. And yesterday was the first time I think I've ever heard you say, "I was at my last community meeting and I didn't care what y'all do." Because you were always bringing people together and trying to find the middle ground. And, and I mean it sincerely. Nobody could have done that but you. You had the right temperament, the right demeanor and the, and the right foresight for your ward at that particular time. And I will tell you, when I first got down here, I would sit back and watch all the development go through your ward. And I learned a lot. Because, you know, when I came here, I had no political experience. I didn't come up through anybody's organization. I came through the old fashioned way. And I learned and I looked at what you were doing in your ward. And I watched how you maneuvered. And I attribute a lot of the things that I've done in my ward to the work that you have done and how you have done it. So you have impact on people, whether you know it or not, when you're doing the right thing. And so I thank you for that. And my ward thanks you for that. At the same time, Walter, you, um, you've maneuvered through this place just constantly trying to bring people together, man. And you've done that genuinely and sincerely. And so as we continue to move through this body, I'm the new dean. And you know I'm gonna take the new dean to new heights. We're going from five feet to 6'2". Now, that's an inside joke, cause me and Walter have always, always cracked jokes on his height and my height. And we've done that for my 26 years that I have been here. And so I wish those 26 years, Walter, I can honestly say that I looked up to you, but I've never looked up to you. So I just wanted to add a little humor in there, man. But everything that I've said is genuine. I appreciate you, man. And you have a stellar career and your ward is, and the city should forever be grateful for the job that you have done. Thank you so much and God bless you, brother.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Raymond Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. All these wonderful accolades, excuse me, for you, Walter, and much deserved. You know, I try to remember how many times you were angry with me, happy with me. I think about how many levels of your voice I've heard with various speeches where you've gone from baritone to tenor to alto and some of the greatest speeches I've ever heard here. But I have to say that you have done well. You are the 31st alderman of the 27th Ward. And you are probably the only one that anyone's ever gonna remember as being the one who transformed it the most. It's remarkable to think of what we're losing as you turn the chapter. This body will never be the same. Cause whether people love you or hate you, they cannot deny you. And that has been something that I think you've imparted on all of us. Even as you make fun of, make fun of us, I think even just last night, you were telling people what a big flirt I am. I don't know what you were implying. But it's true. I get it. You've always been able to see the, the best and the craziest of us and make us understand about ourselves as well. That level of humility that you've always shown us, that you've tried to impart on all of us. And having worked with you now under three different administrations, trying to find consensus, even in some of my most craziest days. Cause believe it or not, Mr. President, there's times I have been crazier than you've known me. But you've always, yes, you can. But you've always tried to bring and wrangle the cats here. And I thank you for that. Because I think that you've always tried to show us not just to be show horses, but to be workhorses. And I think if, as you are moving on and as people take this day as a day of reflection of what you've offered the city for the past three decades, everything everyone has said so far is true. But when I think about this room, this role and what it is, as one of our colleagues just said, when you pull the curtain back on what the mysterious role of the alderman is, not only have you developed your ward, not only have you been a leader in this room and, and did, been a chairman and been vice mayor now, but you never forgot your community. I've seen you at ward night in your own office. I've seen you with your residents focusing on what's truly important, which is the people that sent you here from every corner of your ward. That is what we should all emulate. That is what should inspire us all every single day. And I think as, as we all go on tomorrow, tomorrow and in the months coming, you know, your spirit should guide us all. Cause even though I know you've got the dark glasses on, I, I know your eyes, cause we've seen it face to face. And the passion, the emotion, it's raw, it's real and it's well deserved. I wish you all the best, my friend. I'll try not to embarrass you with anything else. Even though you never miss a turn to embarrass me, but that's okay. But wish you and your family all the best. Take care.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Lawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. My first interaction with, uh, the vice mayor, I was a staffer. And, uh, we were at a briefing in person. And at the time, uh, you sit around the big table and I was sitting next to Alderman Tony, who I work for. And as other aldermen would come in the room, the staffers would take the chairs at the back. He probably doesn't remember this. So I was in the stinker chair at this table. Uh, so first Alderman comes in, I jump up, "Oh, here, Alderman, uh, take this seat." And it sinks all the way down to about six inches above the floor. And he's fiddling with it and he's messing with it. And he turns around to me and he says, "Man, I'm too short for this chair. You gotta trade with me." And I did. And I've, I've always learned to say yes when Alderman Burnett asks. It's usually worth it. You're gonna establish a relationship that's gonna last a long time. You have an amazing personal story, um, that is worth sharing, that people are inspired when they're here. And I'm so thankful to have been able to work with you as your vice chair, to learn from you, to see the amazing things you've done to transform your community, to add affordability, not for your area, but all of ours as we grow as a city, to have place for everyone is so important. I was hoping we'd get a little more housing done today on your last day, but we'll get it done in September and we'll invite you back to our party in a coach house, maybe. I, uh, I loved, uh, you and I did a, I called it a home and home. During the DNC, we had the welcome party at Wrigley and I was beaming and, and so excited. It was my first one. And the next day, we were touring the United Center, just some schlubs. Old woman Haddon was there with us, a few others, and you were beaming. You were so excited to welcome volunteers that could come and see the space and take photos. And, and I, I could see how proud you were of the work you've done around the United Center. And that's, your legacy continues there over the next several years while they continue to transform that campus. Your calendar cracks me up because about the first four or five months, all you're doing is cutting ribbons. The whole time. And I said, "No wonder this guy's smiling all the time. He's cutting ribbons. He's got development. He's making things happen in his neighborhood and should be proud of that." And we are proud of you for that. We're proud of you for teaching us how to be better alders and to, to take care of our wards in the right way. I didn't hear Croatian on Alderwoman Nugent's list, but I know you know a little. So hvala and zivio to you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Knutson. By the way, we're not going in any particular orders, just a bunch of you all.
Thanks, Mr. President. And Walter, I just want to say thank you. Thinking of all colleagues, I've learned a lot from a lot of people. I truly do think I have learned the most from you. It goes back to my time on the zoning board of appeals. I remember my first meeting that I was chairing. You had a project up and you, there was a lot of tension, there was objectors. You renegotiated on the spot. And I, you know, I'm a neurotic attorney. I didn't know that that was allowed, trying to figure it out. And you got to yes. You got good development through. And what I've seen from you is that, a desire to get to yes, a real ease at working with people and many different people. And that's how you've achieved what you have over the last few decades. I've taken those lessons and how I try to do development in my ward. Um, and that's your legacy and it's so clear. Anyone who goes to the West Loop and all your neighborhoods see really the prize it is in Chicago. For, for tourism, for business, startups are moving there. The food scene is incredible and a lot of that is because of what you've created. I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you for what you've done, but also, uh, you know, for all the, I'll miss the, the annual gifts. I've got a Walter Burnett candle. I've got a Walter Burnett scarf. There's Walter Burnett faces on bench, benches at bus stops in my ward. Just really, really positive branding things. And you've been incredible for the city. I'm friends with, um, both of your sons. And I, you know, I really hope I get the opportunity to, I work with Omar. He represents part of my ward and who knows what's to come next. Um, and, uh, we'll know each other for a long time, so thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Yancy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Walter, uh, known by many titles, chairman, vice mayor, alderman, rapper, boxer, uh, father, all those things. The one that means the most to me is brother. Met Walter, uh, well, we share a fraternal bond. But the first thing Walter said to me, I'll never forget it. It was inauguration day and we were standing backstage. Do you remember this? We were standing backstage and he walks up to me, he goes, "Man, I thought you were taller than that." Uh, I immediately thought the same thing. But what I, um, what I value most about you, man, is your, uh, ability to get to the middle. Uh, during a particularly tense moment, I think it was last year, in a Black Caucus meeting, uh, Walter offered just like very sound leadership. And for him, it was more about, um, hey, we're a team and we should be that than it was about anything else that existed in that time. And since then, uh, you, you and I haven't had a ton of conversations, but you have always offered sound advice, uh, which I valued. And so in sort of watching you, uh, move through this, I'm gonna steal a line from Jay-Z. I'm not gonna steal the whole thing, but you have shown me how to move in a room full of vultures. And so I, you know, between that, your redemption story, um, from Cabrini to the council, man, um, you have left quite a legacy. And, um, I value and appreciate you for that. And I also, uh, accept the mantle, I guess, of shortest guy in council now. But nothing but respect, love, um, honor. Uh, and I pray that all the rest of your years going forward are just as fruitful. Thank you, brother.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderman Sigcho Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I do wanna, um, not only recognize Alderman Burnett, of course, but, um, his wife, Ms. Williams and his family. You truly are inspiring team. And, um, I tell you that I, um, have felt at the, at the personal level, at the human level, your sense of empathy and your commitment, um, to the community. I would like to, to remember a few, few occasions, um, where Alderman Burnett does not, does not hesitate to take meeting, but even takes meetings in different languages, as you can see, from many people. And his inability and, uh, as something that I recognize at the human level. And Alderman Burnett, one time, taught me something that really stuck with me. Um, we both serve as chair, or co-chairs of the Affordable Requirement Ordinance. And, uh, one thing that he did tell me and that really stuck with me is that I'll never forget where I come from and a commitment to public housing and the desire to see Cabrini Green revitalized and to see his home and his community be whole again. And that really stuck with me. As, um, someone that sees the, the need of coming to consensus and, and really be honored to the ward and your commitment, I've seen you taking positions, even though sometimes the pressures, um, to do otherwise are there. And I've seen you kept your promise and your word. I cannot thank you enough for the advice and the multiple times, when you have said that we gotta do what's right for the city. And I've seen that. And I really mean that. Cause it's a, it's not, it's an easy thing to say and a very, very difficult thing to do. And I recognize your friendship, your commitment to the city. And, uh, you'll be missed, but I'm sure we'll continue to see you in a different capacity. So, uh, someone have seen the impact and the legacy you leave, not only as currently the longest serving alderman, but the impact that you have had on your community and your commitment to housing. I look forward to keeping in touch with both of you, Ms. Williams as well as you. And, uh, I am thankful for your time, your advice and your commitment to what's right for the city. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Alderwoman Monique Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Timmy took my spiel on the, um, the benches. Because if you on the west side, you see half of Walter's body with a hat. I mean, that's just something that has been in our community for a very long time. So, um, So I'm gonna miss that. I just wanna say that I am, I'm proud of you. You know, you have transformed a community. You know, my dad lived in that ward, so he was so excited about Randolph and the ten restaurants that they had when he was living. To look at, I mean, he would be ecstatic today to see what you've done. You know, when I first came into this position, I, something I kept saying, help me make, if you did it over there, it can be done in Landale. And I won't stop pushing for that. I won't stop pushing for housing that you've done. I won't stop pushing for economic development. You know, you, your kickoff for the reentry program was in Landale, because that's typically the first zip code that most people come back to. And so, you know, you've done a major mark on the West Side, and it won't be forgotten. And Darlinda, Darlinda, I know that you're getting some part of your husband back. And we thank you for sharing him with us for the last thirty years. Because I've had the opportunity to know you both from my family. And so your work will not be, it won't be forgotten. And I'm sure that everybody in this room will still be calling, hey Walter, how can I do this? Or hey Walter, can you let me know what developer did this or did that? And so that, you know, that says a lot. And, you know, whatever the naysayers are saying, you did it. You did it, and you should be so proud. So, I am so proud. I've watched you my entire life, and I am proud. And I thank you for your service. Thirty years is a long time. I don't know if I can do that, but hey, you've done it. And it was, you did it gracefully, and thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Laspada.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Alderman Burnett, I don't know how to not call you Alderman Burnett. I hope this is coming through. My first memory of you is long before I was in this work. It was at the Rosa Parks Apartments with Bickerdyke. I don't know if you remember this, but you went dancing down that Yellow Brick Road as we were celebrating that day. It is indelible in my mind. And the wonderful thing is, from then to now, I know you as being a joyful person. I know you as being wonderfully unguarded, in the best sense of the word, and always being kind. And those are rare traits in the work that we do. And in that time in my life, I never would have dreamed, sincerely, I would have the opportunity to work with you in this capacity. I have learned so much from how you do your work, your presence, again, your joy. I'm grateful for all of it, sincerely. And I know at some point, I'll see you again at Soho House. And until then, I say arrivederci, sir.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would be remiss if I didn't chime in here as well. I'm at a National League of Conference event, and happened to be talking about some issues that we're dealing with in the city. And have always been supported by the Vice Mayor, and trying to get him engaged in the National League of Cities to hear what other cities, states, or countries are doing around solving issues that we have here. The Vice Mayor has been a strong leader in the City Council for as long as I've been there. And he's been the constant professional, humble, and can't wait to see the book when it comes out. He has led a career here. If you take a look at, starting in the Chicago Housing Authority to where he is now, I'm just very proud to have served with the Vice Mayor for over a decade, and looking to continue to work with him moving forward. I view him not only as a colleague, but I view him as a friend. Someone that has a deep desire and love for the city. And someone who statistically, having come from Chicago Housing Authority, shouldn't be a member of the third largest city, but says, no, I'm gonna do it. And just really a tenacious person. And just, again, the city was lucky to have him serve for thirty years. So I would be remiss if I didn't say any words. And looking forward to continue working moving forward. Congratulations, Walter. And please, please do take a little time off. And then, obviously, it's up to you, but you've earned it. Congratulations.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Talia Faro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had the pleasure of meeting Walter back in 2015, on a radio show, actually. Walter was on the Garfield Major Show, WVON. And Walter's opponent at the time, gentleman running against Walter, made a comment. And for the first time, I saw Walter's passion. Not just his passion for the city of Chicago, but his passion for people and issues that we face in our communities. And that has never stopped. I've actually enjoyed, I'm one of very few words, but I have enjoyed Walter's passion. I think he has the perfect balance of being lighthearted and exhibiting passion when it comes down to issues that affect his ward and affect the city. To me, Walter, I say this in all sincerity, when I say that you are the definition of loving people. Because there's a really big difference between loving the city that you work in and loving the people that are in this city. And I can honestly say that you've exhibited a passion for loving people. I thank you for your mentorship. I thank you for allowing me to view your leadership. And you've mentored me, as well as others, in this council. And I think we've all learned from you in one way or another. And there's so much more that we can learn from you. When it comes down to building a ward, I quietly watch what you do. And I try to emulate that in my ward. You've done a great job at it. And I don't think anyone can say anything different. I want to say, Walter, that I've watched you at the table on the West Side in our West Side Black Elected Officials meetings. And that same passion and display there, whether it's your ward, my ward, Alderman Irvin's ward, Alderman Scott's ward, if the West Side is being mentioned, you exhibit your passion about that. But I'm gonna tell you one thing that I'm most proud of you. And this is something that I don't think I've ever told you. I met some gentlemen a long time ago at, I believe it was a Chicago Football Classic, that you had mentored. And these were gentlemen that had a rough start. And you've mentored them into being businessmen. And the impact that they told me that you had in their life meant a whole lot to me. And I've not seen them since, but if you were in their lives, I'm sure they're doing well. But that, the story that they told me about Walter Burnett sticks with me today. And so when it comes down to how we should view people that come across our lives, we should add to their lives, no matter what that is. If we can do something to add to their life, then we should. And so that story has stuck, and I'm very proud that you took the time to mentor them into being businessmen. And have somehow changed their trajectory into a life to whereby they're very proud of what they probably do and the families that they're raising. So thank you for that, Walter, because that has stuck with me. And I really wanna thank your wife. I know what the sacrifices that families go through at times, because Walter's often away from home, working. And so I wanna thank you for your sacrifices that you've made. In front of the bottom of my heart, if he's around the house too much, you can send him back to us, we'll take him. But Walter, thank you. Thank you for teaching me about passion and loving people. Thank you, and congratulations.
The Chair recognizes Alderman Napolitano.
Thank you, Mr. President. Walter, simply put for me, you're a great dude. Your ability to slide into a room full of us, for your colleagues, and say hi to everybody in about twelve different languages, and with your collars popped, you always had a smile on your face, and brought a joke in, and would leave us all with a lasting impression. And your ability to slide out without us even knowing was even better. But the biggest take from it that I wanna thank you for, you never hesitate to talk to anybody. What we should take as a council from you is how everything ends at that doorway with you. Whether we agree with each other out here, the second we cross that threshold heading outside, it was over. It was back to just, let's see what we can do for the betterment of our city, for the betterment of us being colleagues and brothers and sisters. And that's a lasting impression that I wanna thank you for, that you gave me. And I think myself and everyone in here should utilize that a lot more. Because it was a great talent that you had, and I appreciate everything you did. I appreciate, ten years ago, when I came in, that you walk up to all the new people, and you extend that handshake and say, however I can help you, I'm here for you. And you did it. You did it for as long as I've been here. So enjoy retirement, sir. God bless you, love being around you. You're leaving an impression on me. So God bless you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Dow.
Because I wanna look at you. I told you this morning that I hope that the word I wanna use to describe you wasn't used by any of the other people today, and it didn't happen. So Walter, you are a statesman, a great statesman. And I have seen you grow into that. And a statesman is someone who is experienced and respected. They're a leader, and that's what you are. When I first sat in this seat after a very contentious race, I came in here thinking I knew, you know, I knew my stuff, right? Because I had been a planner in here. And I sat next to Fearetti. I couldn't, he didn't know nothing. And I sat next to Tony Preckwinkle, who I had a relationship with, and I had her point of view. And behind me was, I believe, Ed Smith. And I knew Ed, but not well. But you opened up your arms and welcomed me. And there were times when I would turn this chair around to ask you your opinion. And what I admire about you is that you don't impose your will. Thank you to the newest short man. You don't impose your will. You give your opinion. You show people both sides of an issue, and then you step back. And that's, that's good. Most people want that. So I appreciate that in you. We have a similar ward. You've got haves and have-nots. You have to balance what you do. And I've watched you balance and do it well. And I've taken some lessons from that. The point about doing joint ventures between minority and majority firms, that is routine with me now. And I thank you for that. Paying attention to the details of the development, the contracts, the subcontracts, even identifying somebody outside the office to help you look through that is something that I modeled after you. Your good use of tax increment financing dollars, and how to stretch it, how to pull from different places, to get the things done that you want done, and to have the support of the people who are around you, is something that I've learned. I think loyalty, too, is something that you have. And I'm gonna tell a story which involves Anna Valencia. When Anna and I were seeking to run the same race, I came to you, I thought, you know, because you and I, you know, we say, yeah, we cool. But she was part of your organization. And you didn't blow smoke at me. You were straight, and you told me where you stood. And I appreciate that. People need to be straight shooters, and you are that. I wish you the best as you move forward. Kinda think we all think where we know where you're going. I've learned a lot about that, too, from you, the CHA, and how to, in areas where you and I both had the same experience, where the Transformation Plan took place way back when, and we're still trying to get people back into the communities. And how to try to move those things forward against a lot of resistance. I appreciate that. So I wish you the best. Darlinda, take care of him now. And good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alder Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Walter, I wanna thank you for a number of reasons. I think there's many things that have been said. But you are, I think, something we're not gonna see very often, much more in the city of Chicago. You're very much a lion in this council. A lion doesn't have to walk through the jungle roaring all the time. They already know they run it. And I think the way you've moved has kind of the leadership, the weight, but also is very unassuming. Because I think while a lot of people are playing checkers, you've already won the chess match when it comes to a lot of the legislation here. One of our colleagues said that you're a product of your environment. And I think that is one of the things that you bring to this council that means more than a lot. In order to navigate in the worlds that a lot of us have come from, you have to learn how to have conversations with people who don't get along, where the stakes are higher than just passing an ordinance. You have to identify how to have a voice and assert yourself, and promote yourself, and get things done. And that's not just the rap CDs, but that's just everything else you've done. Those skills are skills that are not taught in the classroom well enough. There's a level of street knowledge that comes in that I think has informed a lot of your value set and how you move things forward. Before, people were identifying as progressive or not, you were moving the ball forward. The City Council had to change law to catch up to you when it came to affordable housing, because you knew how to negotiate with anyone that was at the other side of the table, and do it in a way that was passionate without being destructive to a conversation. Even when people may be what feels like miles apart, you've always understood the value of coming to the table and having the conversations and hearing people out. And so there's an example you set for this council that I think we're all gonna miss. When this council was fighting over positions, your name gets brought up, and you get fifty, you get forty-nine, fifty with you, all in agreement. Because we all had and have the confidence and faith in your leadership, in your integrity in having those conversations. No one feels like they would get played. And that's, it's almost an impossible quality to have out here. When we all talk to each other and have different perspectives, to feel like the person you're talking to is sincere. We need to see more of it. I appreciate you for sharing it. I think when you use every language possible to greet everybody here, there are people who could try that, and it wouldn't come off the same way, because it doesn't come off as sincere. But when you do it, people know that you have a love for the culture, the diversity, and what everybody's perspective is. And I appreciate you for that, because it's something that we need not only as council members, but just as people, and we need it even more during these times. So I wanna thank you for everything you do, for everything you represent, how you got me stepping my suit game up, just because I'm trying to catch up to the vibe. suit game up, just because I'm trying to catch up to the vibe. And I will never, I know that even though we're saying you're retiring, my advice to you and to your wife would be to get you a new phone with a new phone number, because even with you out of this seat, heck, even more so, I don't doubt we'll be calling you up for advice with a lot of things that we have to face as this council. So thank you for making this city better, for being a son of Chicago in every way possible, and for setting a marker that even though I don't think anyone here will attain, it gives us something to strive for so that we can follow your example. So thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderman Will Hall.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. The first time I met you, Vice Mayor, you gently turned down this grand idea in your ward. A group of advantageous athletes wanted to do something. And I was just shocked we actually got a chance to meet you. And you kindly turned us away in a way that still allowed us to keep thinking. And that plan never came into fruition. But you treated us with a level of respect and dignity. And years later, that way in which you treated me is a way in which I try to and strive to treat the residents in my ward. So before I even came here, you set a standard of leadership that truly changed my life. Before I sit down, Chicago is grateful for a lot of families, Jacksons, Leaks. But Chicago is not Chicago without the Burnett's. So to you and your wife, your amazing children, thank you for serving and setting a standard of excellence that will last beyond your years. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Hoppinworth.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's lovely to see you again. We were together not too long ago, dancing at a birthday party for Jeanette Taylor. And I hope for you for many, many more hours and many more days to come, maybe somewhere on Randolph, we can meet Alhambra. I, I wanted to say kamustaka. I'm going to miss our banter. You know, we talked a lot about what, what your legacy is about in terms of affordable housing. But I think that Alderman Talia Farah got it right. It's not just about the buildings, it's about the people inside. And that's why I think representation matters, because you're not just thinking about the buildings, you're thinking about the people that will help. So I want to thank you for that. It wasn't too long ago that you walked into council, and we sat right over here. And I remember you had your hat on, I think it was about a month ago. And Vice Mayor, you came in with your coffee, and you sat down, and you said, "I've done all that I wanted to do." And I remember that you looked like you were at peace. So I'm really happy for you. I'm happy for you in a way that, that I am happy for an artist who's been working on something for 30 years, and can finally step back and say, "I've done it all. I'm done." I want to say that I, I remember a time, it was just outside these doors, and I, as a freshman here, struggling to pass my first big piece of legislation in this body. And I was, I was telling you about, I was telling all the things that I was doing. I was, I was talking to all, to all the people that I needed to talk to. And you said to me something like, "Lenny, is it, is it going to help a lot of people? Is it, is it going to benefit Chicago?" And I said, "Yes, Walter, it is." Do you have any advice? Do you remember what you said to me? You said pray. And I laughed at the time, because that was, that's preposterous. Like, I would just pray about it, and it would just come. But it's exactly what Alder Dow was saying. You didn't impose your will. You, you said, "Go, go find it deep within you, and, and it will happen." So I, I want to appreciate you for that. The other thing I want to say is, as somebody who wants to make Chicago better through policy, working with people, and digging to this higher power through prayer, I really look to you for, for inspiration and, and to walk in your way. And what you have done in the city of Chicago is transformative. We need to do all of that, for all the reasons that you told me that you wanted to do it. You wanted more affordability, affordability in your neighborhoods, because you want to keep it diverse. That's what you want. And I want that, too. So I'm happy for you, Vice Mayor. I'm happy for you, Walter. I'm happy for your family. And I wish you many more years of dancing in this city of Chicago, and I hope to be there with you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Alderwoman Stephanie Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Everyone is talking about this well-dressed Walter Burnett, but I remember I was about seven years old, and I was seven years old, coming down to City Hall with my mom. And we had gotten off the elevator, and I saw this little man in this bow tie and suit. And at the time, the nation was very high in terms of selling bean pies. And I thought that Alderman Burnett was one of the brothers. And you were so kind and so nice. And seeing you, I think you were about 32 or 33, as a freshman Alderman, and the glow up has been real. Walter, I look at Vice Mayor, I look at you, and you are the epitome of hope, redemption, a second chance, and what God can truly do, and how God can use us to be Levites. There will be no office of reentry if it were not for you and your influence during the pandemic. Three months, just three months ago, you said your final goodbye to Mother Briscoe. And you still came to city council the day before your mother's funeral. And you all will probably still be having to pick me off of the floor four months later, had it been my mother. And it just shows your dedication and your commitment, not only to the 27th Ward, but to this body. I am so honored to have served with you for the last six years. You told my mother in 2019 that you would take care of me, because I was your neighbor across the office. And I so enjoyed being your neighbor, because Jason Irvin told me you had all of the money. And so I never bought paper or ink, my first four years as an Alderman, because of you and Reggie and everyone. You just know how to look out and take care of people, and the people that you love. We share stories with being First City by shares of young Dems, being chairs of the Black Caucus. Thank you for paying your dues. You know they are non-refundable. So I'm so glad that you know that. And I really just thank God for your life. And I really thank God for Darlena. We have found times where I would always end up with you at some event, DNC that time, and on the dance floor at the First Mirror's party. And I thank you for being the rib, the fragrance, and one of the best, one of the best strategists in the city of Chicago that people don't even know, that you really are the secret machete of the 27th Ward. So thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you for looking out for us. Thank you for taking care of us. Thank you for being so unapologetic about being from Cabrini. And I know you have sat with the top billionaires of the world. You have had some of the best award-winning, world-renowned developments. But you have never been ashamed of where you are from, who you are, where you're from, and whose you are. And you have been a model leader and a model servant of God. So thank you so much. I cannot wait to, I have more stories, but I'm going to tell it at the Black Caucus dinner that you're going to pay for. God bless you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Riley.
Right. Walter, I'm going to miss you. You know, when I, when I first got elected in 2007, I remember I was invited to a lunch at Gina Giorgetti's by Secretary White. And we were having lunch, and he was explaining the history of the relationship between the old 27th and 42nd wards. And that goes back to Mr. Don and a whole cast of characters. And at the time, I was brand new and a bit overwhelmed, and I think I'd just been barely sworn in. And I wasn't really quite understanding what this special relationship really meant. And obviously, I'd been a longtime fan of Jesse White, so I just kind of sat there and shut my mouth and smiled. And I can tell you, it didn't take a whole lot of time for me to figure out that there always has been a special relationship between the 27th and 42nd wards, for lots of different reasons. But I can tell you that there's been a special relationship between the 27th and 42nd wards since you and I have served together. And you know I've worked for a whole bunch of politicians in other states, around the country, federal, state, local offices. And I've been really fortunate to work with a tremendous number of really talented, gifted politicians. And I can tell you this, and this is genuine, I have never, ever worked with a politician with a natural gift in retail politics like you. And I've wondered about that, you know, how is it that Walter's so good at this? And it took me a while to figure it out, but it's because you're the genuine article. You're you. You're a real person, and it shows. You don't put on an act. You're legit. And I can tell you that while we've had about 18 years together in this chamber, and certainly we've had our disagreements over the years, after those disagreements, you've always been a gentleman, and we've always shaken hands. And I can tell you, and I've said this a million times before, because it's true, I have incredible respect for you. And while I've had the opportunity to learn from a lot of other seasoned politicians, I got to say, I've learned a tremendous amount just working with you. And I'm going to miss you. And I'm going to miss your advice. And for 18 years, you gave me a lot of fashion advice I didn't take. And I'm working on it. But, but again, you know, your sense of humor and your, your genuine love for people, and your passion for this job show. And, you know, I know that your successor is going to have incredibly, figuratively, large shoes to fill. And, and I can tell you that I'm proud of the relationship that we've had. We had a tremendous time in Copenhagen. I almost forgot about that. We also promised each other what happens in Copenhagen stays in Copenhagen. But we, we put a lot of miles on some bicycles over there. And I remember, right after we got back, you were all of a sudden, you were all about the bicycles. You were going to be bike riding everywhere you go. And I remember you were telling then-C dot Commissioner Gabe Klein how excited you were. And I think it might have been your first or second day back, you're out there on your bike, and off you go. And within five minutes, you get dored by a car, and you're, you're on your head. And, but you know what? To your credit, you got back on that bike. And, you know, I think that tells us a little bit about how you've led your life. You know, when you run into roadblocks or hit a hurdle, you straightened yourself up and gotten right back out there. And, you know, that's, that's an important quality in people. I was walking, walking your wife into chambers this afternoon for this. And as we were walking in, I asked her, I said, "Are you, are you ready for a whole lot more Walter in your life?" She said, "Because there's about to be a whole lot more Walter in your life, and Walter can be a lot." And she didn't miss a beat. Darlena said, "Oh, don't worry. I'm sure Walter will find plenty of excuses to get out of the house, and I have no doubt you will. And I know that you're not done in public service, and I don't know what you choose to do next. But whatever it is you do, I know you'll do it leading with your heart and with your integrity." So I can tell you, I'm going to, I'm going to miss you tremendously. I do hope you'll pay us a visit from time to time, but I truly wish you well. And I really am proud to call you a friend. Best, best to you, Walter. Take care.
Thank you. There are two more speakers that I have that wish to speak before we offer leave from the bodies for the city clerk to offer up some recognition. I have as the final two speakers, unless anyone else wishes to speak before our clerk. Okay, please add Alderman Robinson then, so we have three more speakers before the clerk. All right. The Chair recognizes Alderman Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Burnett, I don't know if you remember this. It was my first, my first year. And I was in one of my communities on a Sunday afternoon. It was a, we were called to a house that we had some problems with. I won't get into all of that. But the person, the woman that we had one, had a problem with, turned to me and said, "I'm going to call Alderman Burnett. He going to get you, you going to get in trouble." And then I said, "Burnett, don't run nothing over here." But I got a lot of stories, a lot of, so I'm going to leave the short, the short, the short jokes alone. But I, too, like, had wanted to say something that nobody else said. And as I sat here and listened to everybody, it came to me that, Burnett, you are a historical figure. And I went and looked it up. It says, "A historical figure is a person who has made a significant impact on history, whether through their actions, ideas, or contributions to society." Burnett, you are an individual that has made a lasting legacy, that influenced subsequent events and shaped the understanding of our past. Cabrini-Green, Westlu, Greentown, East Garfield Park, near Northside, Old Town, West-Humble Park, West Town, Goose Island, Medical District. You built those. So I couldn't make any short jokes, because you larger than life, man. You literally built these, these neighborhoods, these communities. Not bad from somebody from Cabrini-Green, former GD. Oh, did I say that? So I, I, I'm glad we're taking this opportunity to give you your roses. You have absolutely deserved it. 1995 to the present, you, you have, you have, you, you have shaped Chicago. You literally have had an impact on Chicago's history, Chicago's legacy. In listening to Padal talk, I learned all these things from her. Now she's giving you credit. So that's part of you as a, as a bridge builder. I remember at your mom's funeral, I think out of all the interactions you and I had, that's where we, we settled on the same place, because our relationships with our moms. And I'm sure she's told you, when she was alive, but I'm, I know for a fact, that woman was extremely proud of her son. And when I was going through the medical issue with my mom, and I told you about, she got out the car one day, and she was laughing. And, and I said, "Mom, what, what, what you, what are you laughing for?" And she turned to me and said, "Greg, I'm so glad I got you. I thought about you and your mom." Your mom, I'm sure she was glad that she had you. You are a great son to her. You are a great colleague to us. Despite our differences in fraternities, you are a great brother to me. And I won't say I'm going to miss you, because I'm not letting you go. I'm going to still call you. I'm going to still find you. I'm going to still talk about the height difference. I'm going to do all of that, because I still need you. I'm still growing as a, as a professional. I'm still growing as a person. I'm still growing as a young man. And I resigned to the fact I could learn, I could learn a lot from a dummy. So I'm going to still live for you. Thank you for everything you put into me from day one. I love you, and thank you again for being a good brother. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Mitz.
Thank you. Well, Walter, you know, it's been a long journey. And I'm glad to see you come at this point in your life, where you can really say, "I got enough. I want to do something different." I remember you sitting in the council, and when George Don passed, I'm sitting back here, and you were speaking, and you were crying. And I said, "Why is he crying?" But you showed the passion that you really felt, and it wasn't, it had nothing to do and it wasn't, it had nothing to do with the color. It had to do with loyalty and how you really and truly loved him. Well, you've led your life that way. The love that you have for the people who support you, who have embraced you, Jesse White. You know how often you talked about Jesse White? Anytime somebody asks you, "Can you support something?" "I got to see Jesse White. I got to see Jesse White." You and Darlena both have been out here in campaigns and running these elections and who is better to receive your accolades? But you know where your accolades came from? I want to tell you this. Only from the grace of God, God got you there. I know this because we are serving in church together. I see you every Sunday when you're up there as elevated to the deacon level. God brought you from down there getting pardoned with the church going with you all the way back and you ain't stopped running since. And if you want to know where he got it from, that's where he got it from. The love that you have and the God that does well within you. While we were talking and everyone talking, Pastor didn't call me on the phone just to say, "You know, you know, maybe you want to talk to me, but it's just a coincidence as we're giving you your accolades and the work that you've done." I hope you didn't pick that up on the pastor since he retired either that you wanted to do this. "Okay, I'm going to get tired now, okay?" But I'm glad to be able to stand here today with you. I know it's not the end-all for us. We're going to ask God to continue to bless us as we continue to move and as our children grow up and supporting them and educating them. That's what it's all about. At the end of the day, all you can do is somebody give it to you and you pass it on to others so that they can be as prosperous. And then when our work is done here on this earth, then we can be born rest in peace. So thank you so much for your service, brother. Love you.
Thank you. Our final speaker unless anyone else wishes to add their breath to this space. The Chair recognizes Alderman Robinson.
Going to take a note from my friend and mentor Chairman Dowell and look at you, Vice Mayor Burnett. Colleagues, there are three things that Walter continues to say in this building, outside this building. One is my wife, my sons and my ward. My wife, my sons and my ward. What does that mean? That means that these were three things that are important to you. That Walter, you focused then on. And whatever you had in front of you, your wife, your sons and your ward were the utmost important. As someone that you have supported in the Illinois General Assembly and now Alderman of the Fourth Ward, I'm still scratching my head from time to time about this last position.